All right, everybody, it's seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. Thank you all for being with us tonight. This is the Monday, May 17th, meeting of the City Council. We have with us tonight Pastor Brian Downing with Oakdale Church of God at 1631 Cooper Lake Road. I'd invite the pastor up now for the invocation and pledge, and everybody please rise.
Thank you for having us today. Let's open in prayer. Father, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you so much for your love and kindness towards us, and we just pray and ask right now that you would continue to lead and guide our city, giving wisdom, insight, and discernment as to how we should move forward as a community. Lord, we thank you for this community and the many blessings you have given this community through the leaders and businesses and many wise people who live here. And, Lord, we just, as we give you thanks, we also pray and ask for the ability, Lord, to continue to move forward. Father, thank you for the City Council and for the many who serve this city, and we just give you praise and honor for the many things that they do each and every single week. In Jesus' name, amen and amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor, for being with us tonight. Appreciate it. Item two is agenda changes. We don't have any. Item three is the mayoral report, and we'll start 3A 2021-195. We have a presentation to one of our staff members, Mr. Dan Campbell. He's received a certification in information systems, and we've got Mr. Michael Hurahan here from the Carl Vincent Institute of Government to make a presentation. I'd invite you up to do that now.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity. My name again is Mike Howarthan. I'm the faculty of UGA, and one of my roles is to be the academic advisor to a professional society for information systems and information technology folks in the state of Georgia. The acronym is GMIS, which stands for Government Management Information Sciences. And there's a number of credentials that we present. Part of the education, technical, and leadership training for folks that are members of GMIS, Government Management Information Society. And you have a distinguished staff member who has completed this certification. There's only about a third of the members of this society that complete this level of certification, so it's a pretty significant accomplishment. And I want to present the Local Government Chief Information Officer, or LGCIO, LGCIO, Local Government Chief Information Officer. Certification to Dan. Anybody who has ever wanted to be a member of the UGA Society, here's your opportunity. Anyway, without further ado, I present... His project, by the way, part of the curriculum, was to create a new inventory system for the forensic staff of the Criminal Investigation Division of the City of Smyrna Police Department. So, pretty significant accomplishment and a pretty significant impact relative to your police department. Dan?
Sure. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I just want to say a few words. Thanks, Mike, for coming out tonight to present this to me. I want to thank the police department. It was a great project to work on. Took the basic... Quick synopsis, took their evidence inventory system and upgraded it. And they did most of the work. I just took care of the IT part of it, building it from ground up. They're the big heroes, and I just want to call them out. Major Terry McCormick, Sergeant Ron Eaton, Andrea Boyes, the certification manager, Ramona Christ Malon, who's no longer with the city. She went to work for the company to... We installed the software. Virginia Thompson, my boss, Chris Addicks, and my team over there, Dat Lou and Tyler Addison. And most importantly, don't want to forget, my wife, Joyce, who is my harshest critic when I was writing this paper. It started out... It became 12 pages long. She had me chop it down to nine, and we went through a lot of rough straffs, and she helped me out a lot, so I want to thank her. You know, the sun rises and sets with her, so I want to thank you all for this. And cheers to Smyrna, Smyrna's finest and Smyrna's bravest. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Mike, for being here, and thank you for recognizing your wife, because I was wondering if you were going to do it, and I was about to ready to tee you up. When Dan's not running around town, he runs twice a day around here. He does a really good job for us. So, congratulations. I know that's job...
He was almost his harshest critic.
Oh, oh. Congratulations to you. I just had a couple of things. I wanted to let everybody know that Support Smyrna continues to be something that is growing and helping citizens in our community. Was at the Smyrna Business Association meeting last week, and at the end of the meeting, somebody said that there was Griffin Middle School students who were carrying lunch debt into high school. And so, we decided that Support Smyrna would not only pay that off, but we would reach out to all of the other schools in Smyrna and see if they had debt too. And most of them did, and so now all of that's been wiped away. As I mentioned before, Support Smyrna was born out of the pandemic. It's something that is a great tool for citizens to help other citizens in need, and we have applied for our 501(c)(3) status so that we can grow that organization and really make a huge impact on our city to help our folks. So, excited about that. Some of you have asked me about the stimulus money that's been in the news that we're supposed to be getting. We don't have a plan for that yet because we were miscategorized by the federal government. Imagine that. They didn't put us as a metro city, and so we are... The amount that they're now suggesting that we get is significantly less than what we were going to get initially in the estimate. So, we're working through that. Penny's done a great job on our staff trying to get answers. But until we know exactly what we're going to get and that we won't know how to use it, so we're waiting on that, and hopefully we'll have an answer in the next few weeks. And then I just want to remind everybody that we're still doing vaccinations, the Pfizer vaccine, every Friday at the community center from 1:00 to 3:00. Now, ages 12 to 16 can also be part of that effort. If you bring somebody 12, 16, they got to have a parent with them and some way to prove their identity and age, so birth certificate or whatever you want to bring. Roy Acre has done very well in all of this, organizing the vaccine effort, both at the community center and out into the neighborhoods, and really thank him a lot for all he's done there. With that, I'll conclude the mayoral report and move on to land issues, zonings, and annexations. Item 4A 2021-186, request for a name change for the Carriage House Apartment Complex located at 810 Windy Hill Road to 810 Windy Hill Road LP, doing business as Beckett Park Apartments. Ms. Mascheri, any background?
Yes, sir. There's been an ownership change of the apartment complex located at 810 Windy Hill Road, and a name change has been requested. The requested name change would be from Carriage House Apartments to 810 Windy Hill Road LP, does business as Beckett Park Apartments. George Connell is the applicant. The name change has been approved by the Fire Marshal, Building Inspector, City Engineer, 9/11 Communications, Water Department, City Marshal, and Business License Officer. Staff requests the name change for apartment complex located at 810 Windy Hill Road to 810 Windy Hill Road LP, does business as Beckett Park Apartments.
Thank you. This is in Ward 5. I'll turn it over to Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to move to approve item 4A... I mean, 4A 2021-186, the request for a name change for the Carriage House Apartment Complex to 810 Windy Hill Road LP, doing business as Beckett Park Apartments.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Dr. Whedon. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 6-0. Thank you. I should have mentioned Travis Lindley, Councilman Lindley, is traveling tonight and will not be with us. And our city administrator, Joe Bennett, his son had a graduation tonight, I think a kindergarten graduation, so he's on his way. But he's got his priorities right, and Ms. Mascheri is going to take over while he's doing that. Item B, ordinance 2021-10, public hearing, approval of the code amendments to Sections 402, 712, 716, and 720 of the city's zoning ordinance to list private dog parks as permitted uses in the general commercial, central business district, and mixed-use zoning districts, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Ms. Mascheri, the background, please.
Over the last year, the Community Development Department has met with business owners wishing to operate a private dog park within the city of Smyrna. Community development staff has worked to identify petitional business locations as well as assist with the permitting and licensing process. The city's zoning ordinance is silent on private dog parks and does not list the use as a permitted use under any zoning district in the city. Due to the number of requests to assist with the location of a private dog park within the city limits, Community Development is proposing a code amendment to the zoning ordinance to identify the appropriate zoning districts where private dog parks can't be permitted. Staff recommends approval of the code amendments to Sections 402, 712, 716, and 720 of the city zoning ordinance to list private dog parks as permitted uses in the general commercial, central business district, and mixed-use zoning districts, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Thank you. I think Mr. Gould is going to handle this agenda item, but let's invite Rusty up for the presentation.
I don't really have a presentation for you all. Just summarize it really quickly for you. We have a prospective business that is looking to start up here in the city. They operate pretty much a private dog park with the opportunity to sell coffee and beer and stuff like that. This model's found in other areas of the city, in the city of Atlanta and Alpharetta. So, we're trying to clarify exactly where this use is allowed in the city. Right now, the city zoning ordinance is silent on it, so we'd had to make an interpretation. We'd prefer council to tell us where it needs to be. So, our recommendation is private dog parks be allowed in general commercial zoning district, the central business district, and the mixed-use zoning district. And that's all I got for you. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Rusty, or any discussion? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wants to speak for or against this agenda item? Please come up now and be sworn in by our city attorney. All right, we've got nobody. We'll close the public hearing. Any questions from council? If not, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a good economic development project. Just to open up some opportunities for some creative, new creative businesses, which we're looking forward to. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, move to approve item 4B ORD 2021-10, as previously read.
Moved by Mr. Gould and seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved 6-0. Thank you. Item 4C 2021-139, public hearing zoning request Z21-007, allow rezoning from R15 to R10 for two-lot subdivision for a two-lot subdivision at a density of 4.08 acres. Units per acre, 0.49 acres, land lot 304, 454, Smyrna Powder Springs Road, AOS 454 LLC. Ms. Mascheri, the background, please.
AOS 454 LLC is requesting a rezoning from the R15 to R10 residential for a two-lot, single-family detached subdivision. The Planning and Zoning Board voted to deny the request by a vote of 5 to 2 at the April 12, 2021, meeting. Community Development recommends denial of the rezoning from R15 to R10 with a density of 4.08 units per acre at 454 Smyrna Powder Springs Road.
This is in Ms. Wilkinson's district, and I'm sure she'll turn it over to Rusty for a presentation.
Good evening. This is a rezoning request for property that's at the corner of Powder Springs... Smyrna Powder Springs and Old Concord. This went before the Planning and Zoning Board, and their recommendation was for denial at a vote of 5 to 2. This is 454 Smyrna Powder Springs Road. It's a half-acre property, more or less, and it's located in Ward 5. There's one single-family home that currently fronts onto Smyrna Powder Springs Street, right there at the corner. And they're proposing to essentially subdivide the lot, leave the existing home and renovate it, and then build a new home just to the south of it. The subject zoning of the property is R15. To make the development work, they need to rezone the property down to R10. The current future land use designation for the property is low-density residential, which allows up to three units per acre. The proposed density for the lot split is 4.08 units per acre. So, it would require changing the future land use designation from low-density residential up to moderate-density residential. Moderate-density residential allows up to 4.5 units per acre. This is a subject property. This is the existing lot as it stands today. This would be the new lot configuration, so the existing home would be completely on one lot, and then they'd have enough acreage left over to build a second home. These are the setbacks for the R10 zoning on Hickory Lane. Since it's a street-side setback, it's a front setback 17, a front along Smyrna Powder Springs of 40, and then interior side setback to seven and a half, and a rear of 25. This is the proposed drive to the new home. They're proposing to eliminate and demo and remove the existing drive and accessway on Old Concord Road. And there are no variances associated with this request. This proposed building elevations of the new home. And then pictures of the subject property. And then pictures of the adjacent areas. Community Development is recommending denial of the requested rezoning from R15 to R10. The requested rezoning would require a future land use change up to moderate-density residential. This area is all low-density residential, so we wouldn't support that change, so we're recommending denial. That. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Rusty?
Rusty, did I... Am I mistaken, or is the driveway for the new home going across the other property?
No, the driveway to the new home is going straight to Hickory Lane. The hatched-out area that you see on the plan that is a portion of the circular drive for the existing house that goes from Smyrna Powder Springs Road to Old Concord Road.
Okay.
The portion that's on the new lot will be removed.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I missed that. Thank you.
Any other questions, Rusty? Like to invite the applicant to come up? Yeah, this will be a public hearing, too. If there's anybody who'd like to speak for or against this, come on up and get sworn in now by our city attorney. He's over here. Y'all, come on up.
This one?
Okay, applicant, come on up.
Is it this arrow? Wow, can you make it bigger? Okay, I have a hard copy. Well, thanks for having us here. First, I want to thank Mrs. Wilkinson. She's the councilwoman over the board, and she came out to see us last Tuesday and spent two and a half hours understanding what we're trying to do. So, we're all on the same team. Sorry. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Wilkinson. Yeah, and we... She... She under... I'm losing this thing. I don't know where it went. Okay. So, we're on the same team. Me and my wife have lived... Used to live on Lee Street, Ward 6. I developed a small subdivision on King Springs in 2005, 2006, Woodbury Place. Bambu Shinaike is my friend and my CPA. I've known him 20 years, and I'm working with him. This is his only rental house. So, he sold... He only had three. We're not big developers. But we are trying to make Smyrna better. Bambu has left... Has moved... Has owned this property since 2004, so it's been a long time. He's not a speculator, and we're trying to make that whole corner of the development better, which I'll show. But in order to do this, it has to work economically. So, right after a few agenda... A few more subjects after this where I have a variance for another lot that's right next to this lot. If I had thought ahead of time, and I didn't know how to do it, I would have done both at the same time. It's 0.77 acres for two lots. One is a variance, one is rezoning. What we're trying to do is to try to do a new house, highly renovated new house, so that when somebody comes to buy, they say, "Oh, wow, I would live here." If all we get is renovate the house and put the new house on the variance lot, it's the only new house in a subdivision, a cluster of old homes. Two of the neighbors have signed approvals, the two closest neighbors touching our land, signed approvals, saying, "Yes, we want this. We want this. We want you to clean up the corner," because right now the corner is a mess. The land's a mess. Mrs. Wilkinson saw it. We spent a lot of time. We walked both lots, and I don't want to speak for you, but you look torn. You wanted to do it, but the land use is saying, "No." I don't quite understand that, but here we go. At the P&amp;Z meeting, I had a whole different presentation showing the house we're proposing was further away from the other houses than half the other ones in that ABC block of Hickory Acres. Our house is 2,200 square feet. We're not trying to put a giant house in there. We're not in anybody's backyard. It fits all the setbacks. We're off of South Cobb. So, it really fits kind of well. What was brought up at the last meeting, the two opposing voices, were, "Hey, if you guys get to do this, all the half-acre lots in this area will be decimated." So, I took it very seriously, and I have it in this presentation, what would happen. All right, so... All right, so the first was, you know, we would like equal treatment, and I know there are zoning laws. I know there's rules. Right across the street, 50 feet away from our house, is Smyrna Grove, 4.09 units per acre. We're 4.08 units per acre. Their average lot size is .13. Ours is .23, .26. So, we have two larger lots right across the street. I even asked, can we get annexed in to this development? So, right south of us, two blocks is Hickory Springs Estates, also high-density in this R15. And within a quarter-mile radius, 40% of the lots are under R15. Well, I know it changed R15 some years ago, and it's nobody's fault that the lots are smaller than R15, but it's not like we're putting something very strange in the area. All right, so economically, it has to work for Mr. Shinaike. And I'm sorry I'm rambling. I thought this was set up better. But we did sell a house three houses away from this house. So, we sold a house in February on Old Concord. There was a Section 8 house that had bullet holes in the windows. It was... There were police that had gone there, so he had it. Nobody was in it since November. He just had it sitting there idle. We sold it. Well, the person who paid the most was a capital group, had the highest offer, and we're like, "Wow, I was really curious. They must know something I don't. Maybe they're going to renovate it really nicely and sell it to homeowner." Nope. I went and looked at it. They're adding bedrooms, because it's a big house, and they're going to rent it, and it's not that good of a renovation. And I am a builder. It's not that good. They're leaving the bathrooms alone. The kitchen's okay. The windows, all right, but the trim's terrible. They just want to jam people in there. So, when I talk to my neighbors, who are the closest to us, they're like, "No, we don't want any more rentals. We want you to get rid of that rental." So, we would be taking away a rental and adding three single-family units. All right, let's go and look at some of this. And I have this electronically... All right, this is a signed letter from the lady Alexis Page, who lives right next to the variance lot, which we'll talk about later. And this is a signed letter from Mr. Doug Smith, who owns the lot right next to the one we want to split. I mean, touching. They can see it. They're... Oh, by the way, I flagged the footprint of the proposed house, and I had people in the neighborhood come look at it. I talked to everybody in the neighborhood. I talked to the tenants of people who own the houses. I sent letters. And as you... Spent a lot of time, you know, asking, "Is there anything we can do?" So, here's our development. That... There's only six owners in this whole unit. The dash line to the left of house number two is the variance lot that we'll talk about later. The one we're talking about right now is house number one with the existing house. The yellow line is the split. You can see that house number one is .23. It's almost exactly the same size as Mr. Tidwell on the left. So, Mrs. Alexis Page, in the green on the left, she signed. And Mr. Doug Smith, lower, right touching us, he signed. They both are like, "Yes, we want this. We want you to clean up the area, get rid of the rental, put in some houses. It's terrible." This is Smyrna Grove. This was 2016. This was 12 years after Bambu bought his land. He bought the land when it was nasty, terrible, terrible apartment complex. He was helping get Smyrna get better. This is 12 years later. They were granted 4.09 units per acre. And there's all the zoning numbers. Anyways, we want same density, but our lots are twice as big, and we're right across the street. This is the exact letter that I sent to all the neighbors, and I outlined each neighbor's house so they would know who they are. I talked to Mr. Tidwell personally. Like I said, I talked to everybody. And I said, "Hey, guys, if you can, can you please sign this letter? I've attached... You know, I put a postage paid. Send it to us." So, we did get the two closest people, and we said, "If you don't want to do it, let us know. And if there's anything I can do to help, let us know. If you're not opposed, you don't have to do anything." Well, I never heard back. Some of the neighbors might be here today. I don't know. I won't beat that up. Okay. At the P&amp;Z meeting, we're the pink circle. We're the pink circle, the P&amp;Z. The two red circles are the two people who had objection. Their main objection, and I do care, their main objection were, hey, we don't want you taking these half acre lots and turning them into two quarter acre lots. So, we looked at it. By the way, see, we're in the pink. We're right next to Smyrna Grove. And that whole Hickory Acres, one person came. All right, this is busy, but we're right in the middle. All the pink is any lot that possibly could be divided. And the blue is a creek. So, to divide a lot, it has to be economically viable, like, uh, uh, our lot has a house all the way on one side. And so, there's an empty quarter acre lot that is usable. Most of these lots have a house right in the middle or the frontage is too small or there's a creek buffer in the back. You cannot economically, you'd have to tear down a three hundred thousand dollar house to get two one fifties. You'd have to build seven, eight, nine hundred. It, you, nobody's gonna do it. So, the greens fit R fifteen right now. Somebody can develop it right now. The pinks are the only ones, those three, that can be split like ours, that have a house over to one side and possibly get another house. The gray one was so close, I can't tell without a real survey. Um, but really, three possible lots that could be impacted by our zoning. Now, the green one, all the way over against Chateau Estates, the, the, the one all the way to the left, that's Mr. LaRue's. He's, uh, the HOA president of that subdivision. And he brought up, hey, we don't want you, you know, splitting all the half acre lots. And I could see why he doesn't want that. Because his neighbors have enjoyed the big lots right next to them. If you look, all the pink, all the pink against his neighbors. Well, I looked. The only one that could be split is that green one. It could be split right now. Our zoning doesn't even impact. It's R fifteen. They could do it right now. All right, so here's ours, a blow up. And I, just for, just not to beat it to death, but the house has to be to one side and there has to be empty land on the other side. So, ours works. This is, I'm gonna blow up that exact green one right there. So, that is the point eight three acres. It's huge, but you can see the house is in the middle and the creek is in the back. So, they would have, a developer would have to tear that house down and it's worth two ninety on Zillow, add ten for rezoning and splitting, three hundred. That'd be a hundred and fifty thousand per lot. No, no one's gonna, no one's gonna do that. It, it would, even in time, as lot prices go up, the house price goes up, it, it'll be commensurate. No one's gonna ever- that house would have to be, uh, uh, declared, what are they, condemned. All right, this is the other very large lot. It's, uh, one point one acres. It can be split into three right now. You see the homeowners on the top and there's two large houses. Now, I bring this up because right next to it, three seventy-one Hickory Acres is Ms. Jill Gordon Evans. She, uh, brought up opposition last time and she was worried that all the land is gonna be developed. Well, you can see that her house is about twenty, thirty feet from the nearest house on the right. But even if anyone did develop, which they're allowed to because it's R fifteen, they can put them right now. They can put two houses right now. It's R fifteen. It's so far from her house because of the creek buffer, it, it's like a hundred feet. So, our zoning is not gonna impact her either. And we're, we're just saying, our neighbors, our immediate neighbors want it. It's the people that are far, far away that don't want it. And they're saying, we're gonna mess up their land, which is not true. And, and finally, uh, this is Mr. LaRue's personal house in, in Chateau. And I'm not trying to, I'm, I'm trying to show that our lot, the smallest of our lots, is almost one and a half time his personal house that he's lived in seven years. So, you know, we're, we're putting in arguably nicer, further away, bigger lots. We're adding three good stock units to Smyrna and getting rid of a rental. If it doesn't go, if the zoning doesn't go, and it's, I mean, you guys can obviously vote it down. It could be that his best option is gonna be sell it to a capital group and they're gonna turn it into a rental and add bedrooms. Then we're left with one house on the variance lot. Are we gonna build a new house surrounded by all these old houses? I don't know, but it's, it's for us to, um, it's for us to decide if, if it's gonna go. That's all I got.
Any questions of the applicant?
I would like to ask a couple of things, um, uh, Mr. Rash. Thank you for meeting with me the other day and explaining to me what it is you want to do. Also, um, just one of, a couple of things that I've heard you say, um, the, um, the lot sizes. I believe most, most of them are a third. You mentioned a half an acre, but I think they're a third of an acre is, because that is R fifteen would be three houses to the acre. So, I just wanted to clarify.
No, 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 um, our, since ours is, um, almost a half.
Almost a half, yeah.
I was looking at anything that our zoning would in, 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 inform. If, if, in other words, the argument is, if we give it to you, Bob, all these other developers are gonna rush in and, and, and split up all these lots. I was trying to just show that anything that was similar to ours, where an R ten would be impactful in the future. Yeah, that, that's all I was saying.
Okay, all right. Anyway, I just, I, I thought you were saying they were half acre lots and I know there are some half acre lots, uh, in other subdivisions. And there may be some here, but most of them are probably not.
Sure, sure, yeah.
And, um, I just wanted to clarify that. And then, um, let's see, uh, I, uh, will, you know, for the, uh, for the audience, because I, I remember you talking about the person that spoke at the P and Z and about the, um, the subdivision that he lived in. And I, um, also did some, in, uh, some research on that. And what I, uh, learned is that, um, particular subdivision, which does have an HOA, it was actually rezoned years ago in the county for, um, what, what I understand was, uh, four hundred townhomes. I don't know if that included some of the, um, ones at the front of that condos.
Yeah.
But it didn't, um, I guess it fell through with the, and the bank ended up owning the property.
Yeah.
And then they came back and annexed into the city of Smyrna and built, um, single family, one hundred and thirty single family homes.
Sure, sure.
But they have, um, twelve acres of, uh, common area on the property. So, it's a little bit different, I guess. And the same with, uh, Smyrna Grove, uh, where it was the apartment complex and it was seven hundred and fifty apartment units. And, um, then it was, and now it's, I think, a hundred and ninety-one single family homes.
Yeah.
So, it, you know, that's all, I would just wanted to clarify a couple of those things.
Sure, sure. And I, I, no, I appreciate it. And I, I did hear you that the argument is that it used to be a higher density came to a lower density. But it's what it is now. It's four per acre now. We want four per acre now. And, you know, you're, the, the, the group that's going right, by the way, I, I think Smyrna's doing a great job. I said this the last time. I don't think, I, I, I think Smyrna's done great the whole time I've lived here. I don't live here now. I, I, I left the country for four years. But, um, the group that's coming right after me, you know, they had an increase in the allowable density from twenty-five to twenty-eight units per zoning, section seven twenty point nine, which is, in the zoning, they had to get a variance. They had to reduce the average minimum floor size from nine hundred to six fifty. And the staff supports that. That's a big reduction. That's a high, it's a big reduction in floor space and a high, raising the density. Also, they're cutting the parking spaces from a thousand to five hundred. Now, I didn't do the study, but the argument is that during the day, people are gonna work at the, at the retail and during the night, the people are gonna come home and sleep. So, you don't need a thousand. Well, with COVID, I think they're gonna be staying and I think you're gonna have a problem with parking. But I don't care. I want them to be able to get the project. I want good projects. I want projects that make sense. But ours does make sense. And if we don't get it, the neighbors are not gonna get what they want. I think you guys aren't gonna get what you want. We're not gonna get what we want. Nobody gets what they want. So, it is a little frustrating because I, I wish I had more time to either do it differently or do all three at one time. I'm doing the best I can because I, I just got back and I'm, I'm renewed to this. But I think it is a good project. I'm not just pushing because it's our project and I think that's all I got.
Any other questions for the applicant?
And just, I, I understand the, the two people on each side you mentioned. Now, one of the, uh, I guess I don't, I'm, I wanna ask because some of that is that they want the property cleaned up as far as the, the, um-
No, they both walked the land with me. They, just like you, they walked the flags. I told them what was going on. They're like, yes, we want, we want this. We want this rental gone away. We want it all cleaned up. It's pretty atrocious right now and it's, it's, it's got trash. It's a, it's a corner that should be a nice thoroughfare, but it's in terrible shape.
So, one of them live, doesn't live in, in Smyrna, does he? I thought you said one of them was out of town and then it was-
The father owns it. The kids are buying it. The kids came and walked it and the father talked to me on the phone several times. I, I've been in lots of communication. In the end, if you guys do this, you have control over trees, canopy, sidewalks. What we can do, we've talked about sidewalks. If you don't, the capital group can do whatever they want. I was reading the tree, uh, tree code. If it's a homeowner, I, I think anything twenty-four inches and lower, they can just, nobody has to say anything. I'm just saying, you, it's, it's, it is better for you to do it also, not just me. That's what I think.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone else have any questions from the applicant? For the applicant? Okay, it's a public hearing. Uh, I know some folks came up and got sworn in. Uh, invite you up now. Just state your name and address for the record. I'm not making this up, right? There were three of you, right? Okay.
Hey, my name is Richard Simpson. I live at, uh, ten fourteen Natalie Lane in Hickory Acres. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to y'all today. Uh, I want to thank the applicant for, uh, presenting a, a pretty well-informed, uh, proposal. And I see how they're able to kind of have the one cherry in the area that's may enable them to do this. But, uh, I just want to come right out and say that I support the staff recommendation of the, the, the denial to rezone four fifty-four Smyrna Powder Springs Street, or Powder Springs Road. I know there was a number of questions that need to be kind of asked and, uh, whatever. And one of those was like, you know, hey, is this, uh, suitable to subdivide? And in my impression, uh, that area is not suitable to subdivide for various reasons. One of which is, that's a very busy intersection. It's right where Smyrna Powder Springs hits Old Concord Road. And even though the entire area is not extremely busy, that's probably the busiest intersection sort of in the area. And, um, if you drive down any of those neighborhoods on any given weekend, you'll see cars parked all up and down the sides of houses. That's because we have friends and family come over and visit and park. And, and usually the, the neighborhood roads provide that parking space to enable friends and family to come by. And where this area is, is, they're gonna remove a significant portion of the parking space for one of the homes and create virtually no parking space for the other home. And it concerns me that, you know, we're creating friend and family unfriendly homes because there's not any area for anyone to come by. I mean, there you are in your home and no one can come by unless you park around the corner and block someone else's house or whatever. So, I don't think it's a, a great idea to subdivide right there at a super busy intersection, have no opportunity for additional parking. Another question was asked about reasonable economic use and I understand how it's economically viable for the applicant and I get that. But in my opinion, having a piece of land is value. It gives you land for, to have a garden, to have your kids play, to have all kinds of stuff. I mean, I don't think anyone would argue that less land is more valuable than more land. And it concerns me that the houses that'll be there will limit those types of activities and abilities. And that will force kids on the busiest intersection in the area to go have to seek fun elsewhere. You know, I don't think that's a great thing. There was the question of the conformity of the intent of the land use plan. It's clearly in violation of that. The land use plan says, no, this is R fifteen area. That's an R fifteen lot. Sorry, it's a little bigger than the rest of them and you could maybe split it up. But that's just not the, the intent of the land use plan and it just doesn't conform with that. In addition, I see it compared to Smyrna Grove, which is right across the street. And I will agree with how it went from over six or seven hundred units to a much smaller, uh, land use. And I would argue, let's do the same with that land. There's already a single home on it that's adjacent to another land. We want to take one to three. That's going in the opposite direction. Let's take that and make that be the cornerstone of that Smyrna Hickory Acres area. Make that a nice corner. I heard it referred to as a wreck, an atrocious, we had land, that's not my fault. Clean up the space. I mean, you have a house there. Let's make it nice. Let's make it a nice part of Smyrna. I've, there's a question about will it conform to the open space requirements? I think it closes down the space and I think it, it makes it less suitable to the open space requirement that the land use already provides for. And I think it, it aggressively encroaches on that despite the fact that maybe it is a quarter acre lot or what have you. It's just not the similar R fifteen of a lot of the surrounding area. Um, and then I heard comments about, you know, how the neighboring areas are, uh, you know, older and tired and varying degrees of disrepair. Well, I mean, that sort of matches what happens when you buy any home, when time moves forward. Time, that happens. I mean, if you go buy my house right now, there's a ladder up against it because I'm busy painting it. Sorry, I'm trying the best I can, you know? I'm trying to keep my property as good a shape as I can. But, you know, those homes were built in the eighties and all of us are working to try to improve our homes. And so, I just, I, I, I kind of take offense to calling our neighborhood older and tired and varying degrees of disrepair. I mean, we're trying. I think that splitting that lot into R ten would devalue the rest of our homes. I think it sets a precedent that we don't want. And, and, and I'm sorry that that's their goal, but, you know, the rest of us are happy in our R fifteen homes. And I don't think we really want to see that change close to home and impact the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else want to speak for or against?
Hello, good evening. Hi, my name is Carol Hanline. I am a current homeowner and a resident in the Hickory Acres neighborhood that's about to be affected by this. Um, I've lived here for twenty years, over twenty years, and I've seen a lot of different changes in Smyrna, um, during that time. But I, uh, am here tonight to specifically ask you to deny the request to rezone four fifty-four Smyrna Powder Springs Road. As I was looking through the comments, um, of, of the different, uh, both the applicant, I apologize, I'm probably shaking a little bit just because I'm not kind of used to doing this type of stuff. So, please bear with me.
You can relax. No big deal.
I know, I know, but it's one of those things, right? So, as I was reading through these, uh, both the applicant's response and different things that the staff had analyzed, I want to make sure I don't do that. I noticed that, um, one of the questions, um, was whether this zoning proposal will permit the use of a suitable view. Or, excuse me, that is suitable in view to the use and the development of the adjacent neighbor, nearby properties. And, and the applicant had, had noticed that he's not going to be building a home that is towering over the rest of us. That is not necessarily, in my opinion, a problem in that neighborhood, um, or with whatever he's trying to plan. It's more along the lines of, as you've heard earlier tonight, that he's going to be, he wants to change the zoning, um, for our neighborhoods. And that will, even though it may seem to, um, be positive at this moment in time, it does set a precedence for other people to potentially come in there. And maybe there aren't right now any lots that are specifically able to be knocked down or have another, one single, excuse me, knock down one house and put two homes on it. But it doesn't necessarily mean that somebody couldn't come in and buy two homes and put three homes on there. So, there, there's, it still sets a precedence in a neighborhood that means a lot to me. This is my home. This doesn't seem to be either one of these people's homes. And just so you know, today, because of how much this meant to me, I walked up and down my street and I asked all of my neighbors that I could find that were at home today, how they felt about this. And every single one of them, around ten is who I could touch and talk to today. Every single one of them was appalled that this was going to happen. And I was hoping that more of them were going to show up tonight, but I do have several of them here supporting me tonight. I have seen them. So, if you need to, to speak with them, know that it is not just the two people that are on either side of this home that kind of count. It's the other people that live in these surrounding neighborhoods as well that have an opinion too. And the reason why, just so you know, I did hear the applicant earlier say that only two people showed up to the zoning and planning committee. Actually, I did so show up. I was a third person. I was just unavoidably attained, uh, detained and could not get here to actually speak that evening. So, I do appreciate you listening to me speak tonight. Another thing that I, I, I noticed that the applicant spoke about this evening was, and I apologize, the, the name of, what is it? Hickory Grove, where we had torn down the, um, apartment complex and we had actually made the, um, uh, single family homes in there. And he said, well, it's right there. It's, it's adjacent to the property. But just because something is adjacent to a property, doesn't mean that we should- But just because something is adjacent to a property doesn't mean that we should automatically rezone it. Just because of my home may be adjacent or nearby a business, doesn't mean that I should all of a sudden be rezoned in my own home for a business. Um, otherwise, we would, we wouldn't have zoning, right? We'd all be the same zone just because he's right next door to it. To me, that does, that's, in my opinion, doesn't mean that that is, is something for him to be able to stand his argument against. Some of my other notes here, apologize. Uh, one of the other questions was whether the property to be affected by the zoning proposal has reasonable economic use and is currently zoned. The applicant's response was is that there was no economic use as is. I feel that a rental property is total economic use, unless I'm misunderstanding what he is saying by economic use there. Uh, he, he believes that the land will remain idle forever. But as you heard, you know, there are so many things that can be done with, uh, excess land. And in this case, what I don't really understand by the homeowner is, is that he has allowed it to become overgrown and become an eyesore. And if, if I don't, again, don't understand why, how a man who, or a homeowner who has not been able to take care of one home, is going to, now going to put three homes on there, and suddenly he's going to take care of all three of these homes. Um, we'd rather see a, uh, example of someone who can actually take care of their home as it is. And then, um, again, I apologize for my taking a little bit of time on this. Just wanted to make sure.
You're about a minute, a minute or so over here pretty soon, so.
So I do have a time limit, I did not know that I did that.
We'll wrap it up here soon and.
Okay.
Yeah.
So in general, that's, that's, that's all my, that's all, that's basically, it's, I do request that you recommend denial for the, or excuse me, that you deny this applicant. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here and for your comments.
Hi, um, I'm Jill Gordon Evans. I am a homeowner in Hickory Acres Drive. I'm the person whose address and so forth are up there. Um, I was at the planning and zoning meeting. I was the person, one of several, who spoke out against it. Um, not because the home isn't pretty, not because it might not fit in, um, but because the larger picture, mainly the future land use. There, right now, there is retail very close by the neighborhood, and that's fine. I knew that when I bought my home in 1995. I am the homeowner, I've lived there. I'm not moving, my house has been paid for for five years. And I too, like I said, live in the neighborhood and feel it's important. I don't want to see a precedent set, like they mentioned, about maybe buying two lots and trying to put three in. Um, I think possibly if any one of you had a similar situation or lived in my home or the home of these people, you would probably not be too keen to have this done, you know, just half a block from your home also. My home is next door to that lot, he said, the only one that could possibly subdivide it, and that is in a floodplain. The home on the other block bought the lot behind it, which is next to me, and bought the lot to the side. That's why it's .81 acres, it can't be built. It floods, it has a swale and a diversion ditch culvert that goes under the road. The city has, at the city's expense, torn it up three times since I bought my home in 1995 because it does flood the people across the street. And it backs up into that huge yard that's .81. So thank you for the city for coming out and trying to fix it numerous times, but no one's going to buy that, it's not economically viable. You could build a home there, but you'd never get the insurance. Um, also, um, to reiterate the thing about the paragraph in the applicant, in number six, the applicant response says, homes in varying degrees of disrepair. Um, the homes in the neighborhood are not in degrees of disrepair. There are a couple that need to be painted. There are five that have been renovated in the paint over the brick, take off the wrought iron, put in the dark stained wood columns and shutters and the, uh, steel railing. There are no fewer than five homes in my neighborhood that have been renovated like that. My home was just painted three years ago. Numerous people have painted their homes, numerous people just have them in the style of the 1960s. Um, that doesn't make them in varying degrees of disrepair. And so at one point, the subject property 454 was probably one of the five worst properties. Now, the gentleman here didn't live in it, understandably, he doesn't control the tenants. But he's trying to represent it that this is going to be the be-all, end-all. Let's make this neighborhood fabulous. In addition to the homes that have been painted, several have, two of them have dumpsters in front of them right now. And I believe it's probably, you know, the Forbes Magazine and the Braves Stadium and the halo effect of Hickory Grove. Um, that corner is going to slowly but surely, whether it's this owner or not, someone's going to buy the home if he doesn't want to keep it and renovate it. It's happening all through my neighborhood. Um, and if you care to drive through it, you would see that. And like I said, it's mostly about future land use all around. I don't want to see high-density stuff put in behind Adventure Outdoors. Also, people use Old Concord Road to cut through, to cut off of South Cobb Drive because they're doing the Windy Hill Project. There's a huge amount of traffic coming behind the U-Haul, and it goes out toward Church Road where, you know, maybe people are cutting back to go to Chick-fil-A. But there's a great amount of traffic there. And even though one of the driveways is to go to Hickory Lane, the second one that he's talking about for his variance is going to have a driveway right there on, um, Smyrna Powder Springs Road. So it's not the best for, it's not going to contribute a huge amount to traffic, but there is some truth to the degree that this property is economically viable. The homes, my house cost me $93,000 in 1995, and my last appraisal was $240,000. So if he bought his in 2004, I'm sure he can renovate it and rent it or renovate it and sell it to someone. I think he's got economic viability, no matter what he does. And I think it's important to protect the rest of the people in the neighborhood and keep the future land, land use as, as it is and deny it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak for or against this item? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Wilkinson, it's in her ward.
So I would like to, uh, thank Mr. Bambo and Mr. Rash for, uh, spending the time that they have with me and also work on the, um, the research that they've done. Um, I appreciate what they're trying to do in improving the area with new homes. And, um, I think that there's, um, still some, um, you know, opportunity or options. But I also hear what the citizens are concerned about too, with the land use and, uh, the future land use of that area and, um, and how, you know, how they value their, um, their homes and their, also their yards, and so, and that's important too. And, um, and I, I do, I guess I heard what one of the people, persons said about the, um, the, also that corner being very busy, and it is a very busy corner, to be adding, you know, another, I guess, another driveway, another two driveway. Well, we'll see, but anyway, um, I, I do appreciate your time though, and, um, maybe there's other opportunity and, um, but at this time, I would like to make a motion to, uh, deny item, I think it's.
Four C.
Four, four C. Uh, 2021-139 zoning request for Z21007 allowing rezoning from R-15 to R-10 for a two-lot subdivision at a density of 4.08 units per acre, uh, .49 acres landlot 304-454 Smyrna Powder Springs Road, um, AOS 454 LLC.
Ms. Wilkinson has made a motion to deny. It's been seconded by Mr. Gould. All those in favor of Ms. Wilkinson's motion, please vote yes. All those against it, vote no. Her motion to deny is approved, 6-0. Next item is 4D, 2021-141. It's a public hearing, zoning request Z21-005, allow rezoning from GC to MU for mixed-use development. 9.73 acres landlot 779, 780, 805, and 806, 2400 Lake Park Drive, 2400 Lake Park Drive Atlanta Office LLC. Mr. Bennett, the background please, and Mr. Bennett, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 2400 Lake Park Drive Atlanta Office LLC is requesting to rezone the 9.73 acres at 2400 Lake Park Drive from general commercial to mixed-use conditional for the development of 277 multifamily units at a density of 28.5 units per acre, 11,000 of office coworking space and 10,000 square foot of active retail space. The applicant is proposing to retain the existing 105,000 square foot office building and build a mixed-use development in the existing parking area. The planning and zoning board recommended approval by a vote of 7-0 at the April 12th, 2021 meeting, and the staff of community development recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. This is in Ward Two, Mr. Wagner's ward. I'll turn it over to you, and I'm sure you'll ask Rusty to come up.
Good evening. Mr. Joe Bennett did a great job summarizing it. I'll touch on some other points here and work through this pretty quickly. This is a property located at 2400 Lake Park Drive. Um, it's just under 10 acres in size. There's an existing 105,000 square foot, um, office building on site and then a large surface parking, uh, area where the proposed, uh, mixed-use building is going to be located. Um, the applicant is proposing to redevelop that area with 277 multifamily units in addition to 21,000 square feet of retail, office, and live-work space within the, um, within the, the building. Um, this is going to require a rezoning from general commercial to mixed-use. As you can see, everything to the, to the south and west that's in Smyrna has a general commercial, um, zoning classification. The current future land use is office professional. Um, they're requesting a, a change in the future land use to mixed-use. As you can see, everything else around it is, is also, um, office professional and then, um, community retail center for, for Marietta to the north. This is the proposed site plan. As you can see, it's a, it's a mixed-use multifamily building with, um, 21,000 square feet of, uh, retail space. It's got surface parking around the perimeter, and then it does have a parking deck, um, in the interior of the building that we'll highlight for you here in a second. It's got, um, front setback of zero, side setback of zero, and a rear setback of 20. Um, those are in performance with the MU zoning district. This is the existing 105,000 square foot, um, office building. And then this is the mixed-use building. So you have about 2,900 square feet for a leasing and bike center. Just over 10,000 square feet of retail. And then just over 10,000 square feet, almost 11,000 square feet of cowork, um, space. And that's all on the, on the first floor, um, of that building. They have an amenity pool, a pool area and, and outdoor space. And then this is the location of a 382, um, space parking deck. And then there's 133 spaces, um, around the facility. They are proposing a sidewalk connection from the mixed-use building to, um, Cobb Parkway. They, they will restripe the access way, um, to ensure, um, a full access into the, into the community. And then there will be, um, multi-use trail connection, um, to the existing trail system that, that goes along the, um, goes along the, the open space in the, in the pond. And they'll make, they'll improve the trail and improve the, the decking and the bridges that go, go over the little stream there. This is the location of the stormwater detention facility. It's an existing facility that's there. When we get through, uh, plan view, that, at that point, they would decide what needs to be done to that facility, um, to bring it up to code. And then there is a stream buffer that, that goes around that facility. And as you can see, all the improvements will be, um, outside of, of that stream buffer. With this request, there's three variances. Um, the first is to increase the density, um, from 28, or 25 to 28.5. Um, the next is to reduce the minimum floor area for the average minimum floor area for the units from, uh, reduce it from 900 down to 653. Um, with this development, they're proposing, um, 67% of the units to be either studio units or one-bedroom units. So that's 213 total units that'll be a studio or one-bedroom. Um, and the remaining would be, um, a two-bedroom unit. So with the majority of the property being under, um, be, being either a studio or one, one unit, uh, one-bedroom unit, um, it really reduces the overall, um, floor area for the individual units. And then finally, uh, they're reducing the parking minimum from 1,005 parking spaces down to 515. That is due to the unit ratio. Um, the city's minimum parking requirement is two spaces per unit. With these being a majority studio and one-bedroom units, um, there's not a need for all of them to have two, two parking spaces. In addition, um, they'll be sharing parking with the, with the office space. So they'll be, when people leave to go and work, um, the office uses will be transitioning in, in, in parking here. And then when the office use leaves, then the people that are using the, the spaces for the, for the residential will move in. Um, so they, they believe they're adequately parked. I think it, I think it'll work out at the number that, that they're requesting. Um, so we're, we're supporting that. These are the proposed building elevations. And then this picture of the subject property today. And then the adjacent properties. Community Development is recommending approval with the following conditions. Standard conditions from Section 1201 apply, uh, except for number two, three, four, eight, and 16 of the section. Um, we list the other ones here. Uh, number one deals with the composition of the building. Number two, um, requires all utility, utilities to be underground. Number three, um, requires the developer to be responsible for any traffic improvements. Um, number four, um, sorry, we got to. It's the same one. Number five is a strip of brick pavers at the entrance. Number six, uh, no debris may be buried on any lot or common area. Number seven, the developer shall install decorative streetlights within the development. Number eight, any, um, the developer shall comply with the city's tree ordinance. Number nine, uh, the tree plan's got to be prepared by a registered landscape architect. Uh, number 10, all yards and common areas need to be sodded and then irrigated as appropriate. And then we added some special conditions. Uh, number 11 is the, the minimum setbacks for the development. Number 12 requires the developer to meet all fire access requirements. Number 13 requires the developer to meet all water and sewer improvements. Uh, number 14 requires the develop, developer to do all the stormwater improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. Fifteen, uh, states prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall have the stormwater detention pond maintained per Blue Book Operations and Maintenance Guide, Guidance Document. So they'll have to make any of those. So they'll have to make any of those improvements and we'll make those decisions at, at plan review if we get there. Sixteen, the developers provide a sidewalk connection to Cobb Parkway and Lake Park Drive. Seventeen, prior to the issuance of land disturbance permit, the traffic study and site plan shall be reviewed by, by G dot. Number eighteen, the development shall not be gated. However, they, they'd be allowed to gate the, the, the deck parking to control access in, in that facility. Nineteen, the minimum floor area should be, have an average of six hundred and fifty-three square feet. Twenty, shall allow the, the parking to be five hundred and fifteen parking spaces. Twenty-one. Deals with the shared parking agreement with the retail and office and, and commercial uses. Requires the parking deck to have a decorative brick exterior. Requires the applicant to do the, the multi-trail, multi-use trail improvements for the, the trail connections. Twenty-four requires the applicant to restripe the private drive at Cobb Parkway. Twenty-five. Requires all air conditioning units and, and utilities for the site to be screened from public view. Twenty-six also requires the dumpsters to be screened from, from the streets. Twenty-seven just limits the, the development to two hundred and seventy-seven class A office spaces or class A multifamily units. Twenty-eight requires that the, the apartments be maintained in a class A first class manner. Twenty-nine establishes interior finishes that are commensurate with, you know, owner occupied dwellings. So hard, hard countertops, pendant linings, higher ceilings, stuff like that. Thirty. Ties the development to the mixture of unit types presented. Thirty-one ties the approval of the development to the, the site plan submitted. And thirty-two ties it to the elevation submitted. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions, Rusty?
Thanks, Rusty, for a good presentation. Just a question for you on the, on the parking. Actually, a couple of questions. I get the idea of office versus, but so the office and the apartments will share that same parking deck and all the available parking?
Yeah, the office use will have access to all the parking on site as well.
Is there any other parking nearby in case that's not enough in the other areas?
There's, there's office development to the west that would be accessed through that driveway that connects to Lake, Lake Park Drive. So as long as it's within four hundred feet, our code allows for a shared parking agreement for that stuff. And then there's around the periphery of the site, there's also the ability to possibly put surface parking. Cause it's, it's loaded on one side of the drive as opposed to both. If I can go back to that real quick for you.
So is the, the parking deck gonna have the five hundred and fifteen spaces or what? I think that was what it was, something like that.
The parking deck is gonna have three hundred and, I can't remember it all. I think three hundred and eighty-two spaces and then there's a hundred and thirty around the surface parking.
You got a total of five fifteen?
Yeah.
And two hundred and seventy-seven?
Units.
Units.
So as you see here, if you, if you look at the site plan I got up on the, if you can see it. You know, there, there's an opportu, there's opportunities around outside to add additional parking if they need to.
Right, okay.
On that bottom half of the screen.
Hey, other question for me is average apartment size is six fifty-three. Do we have, do we stipulate a minimum size?
They're, they're limited, they're limited to the number of two seventy-seven. So, you know, having larger floor areas is going to help them meet their numbers. If they decrease it, they're not, they're not going to have enough units to be, you know, to be profitable. So they can, they can explain all that to you.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah. Yes, it's the, and you guys can ask them this question, what their targeted market is. But from what they've explained to us, it's going to be younger professionals and people just moving into the area that are just starting off. Which is sort of a market and a, and a type of product that we currently don't have here. So when you don't have the three bedroom product that's geared towards family, your floor area for each unit is going to go down. Because you have smaller units, because you're dealing with studio apartments and, and one bedroom apartments.
Well, you, you may have said this a minute ago, but can you tell us again what percentage will be studio apartments? And what percentage would be one bedroom? Oh, because I think that was combined.
I didn't break it down as far as that is concerned. They, they'll be able to answer that for you. But it's sixty-seven percent are one bedroom and studio. And then the, the remaining is two bedroom.
Okay. When I went and visited the site, I remember seeing the dumpster with enclosure and sort of in that back part of the parking lot. But I guess with that, with the way this is designed, will there be? I think that, I don't know if that would still be in the same location or will it be? And is that also, how does that work with the apartments and then with the, the, the commercial building?
They may, they'll have to answer that question for you. They may, they'll probably have a compactor for the residential component and then have a container enclosure for the, the office use. But that would be something we typically handle during plan review.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Rusty? All right, this is a public hearing. I'm going to invite the applicant up and anybody who wishes to speak for or against this item to go ahead and be sworn in by our city attorney Scott Cochran. Come on up just even if you think you might want to say something about this and get sworn in now. Thank you. First will be the applicant, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council members. My name is David Kirk. I'm an attorney with the law firm at Trotman Pepper Hamilton Sanders. With me this evening are Mr. Clay Grubb, who's the CEO of Grubb Properties, Paul O'Shaughnessy, who's the Vice President of Development, and their associate Eric Swan. It's my honor to represent Grubb Properties in connection with this application requesting rezoning from general commercial to mixed use. My job tonight's pretty straightforward to be brief and then be seated so that Clay and his team can present Grubb's vision for this property. Before that, I want to thank Mr. Martin and Mr. Stotts for their hard work and assistance during these challenging times. They've recommended approval of this application with conditions as Rusty said. And in addition, your planning and zoning board has recommended unanimously recommended approval. We respectfully request that when we conclude tonight's public hearing, that you accept these recommendations and approve the application. Following our presentation, we'll be happy to answer the questions that, that were raised earlier as well as any additional questions. How do I get it up on the overhead? There we go. Just very quickly, I want to start by stating the, the purpose of, of this project is really transformative change. Supporting and enhancing existing retail and commercial, creating connections, revitalizing a corridor that has seen better days. With that, I'd like to hand things over to, to Clay Grubb, who's going to tell you about, a little bit about the company. Some issues that have been facing the market and our solution.
Great, great. Thank you, David, and thank you, Mayor and City Council for having me. I'm Clay Grubb with Grubb Properties. And see if, there we go. Make sure, make sure I can work this. Our company is a fifty-seven year old company out of North Carolina that actually got its start building homes in red line neighborhoods for those cut out of the system. We've carried that spirit today and I'm here with, with my team members Eric and Paul, who are working through the detail of the community that we hope to build that will enhance your city and this neighborhood. We have continued, as I said, that spirit that started and today we build under a product called Link Apartments. We've built about five thousand of those to date. They are significantly smaller than your average apartment that's being built in virtually any urban market outside the major, you know, New York cities and that, and that type of thing. And we've done that because we, we feel like there's a real need for essential housing. The majority of our residents are between twenty-eight and thirty-two. We have close to about five thousand of those units. We have never sold one of the apartment communities. We are proud of what we've built, but we, we're not a family oriented environment either. We have young folks. I think we have six children out of about five thousand units that live with us. And we average just point seven five cars per bedroom in our product. We put a lot of emphasis on biking and we actually offer a fifty dollar discount to anybody that lives with us that doesn't own a car. So we encourage folks to get out of their cars. We currently own the building at twenty-four hundred Lake Park, which we've talked about. And as I think everybody's aware, there, there's been a, something that has, has dramatically changed the office environment in which we work in. We have, we really love to match our product with office because the office folks are, tend to be eight to five parkers. And residential folks tend to be evening and weekend parkers. So it's almost a perfect match. In today's world, we even, we expect even less parkers from our office space. So we actually think the reduced parking and five hundred and fifteen parking spaces will have excess parking. There won't be a shortage of parking. Also, we're, we're on a, on a street that has, has a lot of retail. And as you know, retail has been in a major crisis this past year and, and really been on decline for a decade as online shopping has, has taken a lot of sales. And so we do feel that getting people living adjacent to office, living adjacent to retail creates more of a eighteen hour community as opposed to a six to eight hour community. And that creates a lot of vitality as people like to go to the coffee shops. You know, they like to do the services, they, they like restaurants. They like bike shops and, and we're big on that. And then last, the housing crisis has been going on for about a decade and it's going to get significantly worse over the next decade. These two slides highlight what's been happening to construction cost. And that was before what we've seen over the last twelve months. As we've seen, just lumber alone go from almost three hundred dollars a board foot a year ago to today, over fifteen hundred dollars a board foot. For a project like this, that adds almost three million dollars of additional cost. It's going to make it very difficult for future housing in a time where, if you look at the other slide, shows the, the supply and, and the fact is that we've built fewer houses over the last ten years than any decade in over fifty years. And, and in fact, only one year in the previous forty years that we build as little as the most we've built in the last ten years. And that was in nineteen eighty-two in a major recession. This just quickly highlights what's happened over the last year with housing supply. Atlanta being the first city here and you can see the dramatic drop in housing supply. And as a result, we've seen a dramatic increase in housing prices. It's going to make it much more difficult for folks to move into these communities. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Paul O'Shaughnessy.
Thank you, everyone. So just want to talk a little bit about the solution to the problem that Clay introduced. And our solution is, as Clay mentioned, Link Apartments. And so it's really centered around efficiency. I know some of the numbers that you're hearing in terms of square footages may seem on face a little bit low. But it's something that we have spent over a decade perfecting in terms of removing any wasted space in a unit. So if there was a, let's say a corridor, an unused closet or an extra space, we moved it all into the most efficient area we could get where your living space is where you can fit a queen sized bed, two nightstands and a dresser are there. You can have two seating areas in your living room and we got rid of all the wasted space in effort to bring down that cost and bring down the price to a price point that young professionals can afford. So we start with six core floor plans that we repeat over and over again. And that's why we have such efficient floor plans that actually look a bit lower. But when you actually compare the living space in them, they're as good or better than most of the apartments that have, say, six hundred fifty to seven hundred square feet for a one bedroom. And that's the core of our plan. We also highly amenitize these properties. As, as Rusty mentioned earlier, these are class A apartments. They are to compete with the best amenitized apartments in the area. We are making essential housing, but we are also making class A housing. Because our renter is a very discerning renter and they want to live in somewhere that they're proud of. And that demographic that can't afford to move into the community is your first responders, your teachers, your nurses, the young folks that will actually give life to the office buildings and the employers around this area that need them to keep their businesses going. That's exactly who we're trying to reach with our product. So just talking a little bit specifically about this project itself, we bought the building in twenty nineteen. We've already invested three and a half million dollars into the office itself. And before COVID, we actually managed to get that up to eighty-two percent. But now we know that this mixed, mixed use rezoning, excuse me, needs to bring new value and momentum to this aging corridor. So the offering we're presenting here is, is about ten thousand square feet of retail, ten thousand square feet of coworking and about a five hundred or exactly a five hundred and fifteen space parking deck. And let me pause on that for a little bit because I understand there are a few questions around that. We have executed this strategy at our own headquarters in Charlotte in our office that we currently occupy with Link Apartments across the street. And it's a hundred and twenty thousand square foot office building and two hundred and eighty-eight apartments with more two bedrooms than this one has. And it is a four hundred and eighty-eight space deck. So that's less than what's being proposed here and we've done this successfully where we work in our own office. And we're doing this for the second phase of that apartment across the way. So we have a lot of experience in this. We measure all the parking at our properties on a regular basis to create the coefficients that Clay spoke of. And then we measure all of the office parking to make sure that we are not making a mistake in how we calculate this. Because we are the owner and operator of the office and the multifamily. And as Clay stated, we own these and we own them for a very long time. So we don't want to make a mistake and get it wrong. So we've been very precise in how we've calculated these coefficients over time. Forward on that. Just to look at the site, I think what we saw when we looked at this site is what you see on this picture, which is as the crow flies, there's an amazing nexus of energy at the battery that's not far from this site as the crow flies. But if you drive down Cobb Parkway, a lot of that energy starts to get lost as you come down there. Well, what we wanted to do is bring something to this site that creates sort of a magnet at the other end of Cobb Parkway to try to pull that energy further down the corridor, help out the commercial and bring more interesting retailers to the area. So here's a little look at the site plan. The leasing is right up front. It has a very large bike center adjacent to the leasing. I'm sorry, it's not, it should be divided right about in half. So the bike center, our goal is always to have one rack per unit. So that anybody who wants to have a bike has in a first class bike center. So they can use the biking facilities that we're going to build to connect to other places so they don't have to take a car. The retail will be up front. We've executed retail in our most recent projects very successfully. We like to pick things that really complement the We like to pick things that really complement the multifamily, say, like a coffee shop or perhaps fitness or perhaps a bike shop. And then we think a coworking facility will function really well here. It will help the residents work from home and not have to work in their, in their units. And then some of the smaller companies that may want to grow, they could start off in coworking and then move to the office. Above that is residential going up. These are just our typical floor plans. And you can see the parking deck structure in the rear. Here are the leasing, or here are the renderings. We're very proud of the quality we build to. We just completed a project in Grant Park. If you'd like to go down and see the quality to which we built. It's near the Belt Line. It's on Bill Kennedy and I-20 and Glenwood Avenue right there around from the Kroger. But it's a beautiful building and we intend to build something of similar quality here. Here's the retail rendering. And I'm going to have my colleague Eric talk a little bit about the, the signature feature of this project, which is the path, the multi-use path that we're building.
Thank you, Paul. So as both Rusty and Paul mentioned, the, the multi-use trail is an important component of this project. We anticipate that this project can help do for Smyrna what the Belt Line is doing for Atlanta. We see a number of benefits to the trail systems. The National Association of Realtors identified trails as a top-requested amenity for homebuyers. In addition to helping increase property values, these trails also help create jobs and revenue for local economies. They have positive health impacts. And they also provide increased opportunities for revitalization and mobility, especially in underserved communities. So we commissioned a firm called Copenhagen Eyes to come in and perform a study and create a white paper for this project. Now, they are a multidisciplinary firm that works to maximize opportunities for bicycle and pedestrian mobility. Grubb Properties is actually the first developer in North America to enlist their services. The white paper provided several different recommendations regarding infrastructure improvements to encourage biking and walking. The key priority recommended from this white paper is the connection to the Battery. So that's been where most of our focus has come from. From there, we facilitated interjurisdictional conversations with Copenhagen Eyes, the City of Smyrna, the City of Marietta, Cobb County, and also the Cumberland CID. Parties were all on board with the idea for Grubb to pursue this multi-use trail to try to help address some of the current connectivity and funding challenges seen by this community. And they've also helped us to, to understand who might use a bicycle and, and walk more under better conditions in this community. So called out in red here is the portion of the route on property owned by Grubb and by the adjacent Office Owners Association. Now, they are also excited about what these improvements could do for them and their tenants. Having identified the Battery as the primary destination, the white paper and our discussions with these stakeholders really assisted us in identifying several potential routes. But what you see here is what we thought made the most sense conceptually. However, this plan can evolve based on continued engagement and feedback from the community. So, you know, we want to understand what the needs and opportunities are here, and that will help us moving forward. So it's important for us to build something that you all are excited about. So that's part of the reason why we wanted to meet with stakeholders, to understand the needs and desires of the community. We plan to take on the responsibility to plan and construct a multi-use trail on the parcels that we own or will have an agreement to use. We see this as a great opportunity to connect our project and the surrounding community to the, to employment and opportunities there. And additionally, we, we see this, the, you know, the Battery just serving as that large magnet for activity. Additionally, there is the pond that is on the property. We see that as a great amenity. As a part of our strategy, we will preserve that and actually intend to do a number of enhancements. We think that that will serve the, the community well moving forward. With that, I'll turn it back to Paul.
I know we're probably a little over time, but... You know, change is inevitable. What, what COVID has brought to us is something we all have to react to. We need, you know, around these troubled retail properties, you know, we, we, there needs to be more energy and more, more people, more heads in beds. And what we think the solution for, for this corridor is, is to do for this corridor, you know, what the Belt Line did for Atlanta. We feel like this, this trail project could really become a catalyst to do that for Smyrna. And we want to be a part of that. We want to be sort of the initial catalyst to get something bigger and bring that energy down to the site and help the entire corridor. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant?
I have a question.
Ms. Wilkins?
The, when you talked about the pond and the green space there on the property, I don't know if we could pull that back up again because that was, that is one of the things that some of the citizens that reached out to me were concerned about. And so I'd just like to look at that again, a little bit more detail.
You can't quite see it. It's where the nexus of the streams are coming together. But basically, it's the centerpiece of where those trails are now. And so that's the key amenity, the pond itself. So we want to, we're not intending to disturb it in any way. If anything, actually, we were out there about a week or two ago looking at how to clean up the trees and make sure that they get preserved. That is the central amenity for this location. While we acknowledge that we're trying to bring energy there, it's not there now. So the site itself needs to be beautiful. And that pond is a tremendous attraction. So we are going to also commission a, a study just to make sure that the construction methodology and where the trail goes doesn't impact the wildlife through our civil engineer to be doubly sure. And we talked about that at the planning commission hearing last, last time. But that is our, our sincere intention to make that better than it is now.
Okay, is that where the, the three creeks kind of?
Yeah.
Why is, is that where the creek comes, I mean, where the pond is?
Yeah, if you can see the gray shading around that, that's actually the lake itself. It's, I don't know why the, this map shows it as three streams. It's actually, the pond is right there in that darker gray area.
Okay, that's where I was thinking it was. But thank you for explaining that.
And I'd just like to add that every single one of our Link communities has a green designation. And our latest one had, had a silver designation, which is one of the highest you can get. I mean, so preserving the environment is a critical component of what we try to attempt to do.
Other questions of the applicant?
Got a quick question. I think, I don't know if you mentioned it or not. You mentioned about price and things like that. What is your price point for these units?
I'll take it, yeah. I mean, we're expecting studios to start around, just around $1,000, $1,000 to $100. One bedrooms probably around $1,400, maybe moving up to $1,600. And your first two bedrooms would probably start just under $2,000. You would have some corner units that might push up, you know, higher into mid-2000s and high-2000s. But again, we're trying to get that price point for that young professional to come live in this community.
On the minimum square footage size, I get, I heard what you said about just a changing need for housing. But what, what, what is your expectation for the minimum square foot?
The studios that we have are about low, like four...
They're 412 square feet.
They're 412, but they actually compare, just going back to, to the point I made earlier. We had an investor who challenged whether or not that was too small for, for the market we were investing in. And we compared it, you know, directly to another studio unit. This was in Charlotte, was 560 square feet. But if you measure the living area of where the actual living area and the dining areas were, we were like-for-like the same. It's just very stretched out, very long corridor area. A lot of developers design around the site. And so they end up with weirder units with, you know, either kicked out or, or stretched. We start from the unit and we design to the site.
Yeah, as I say, I mean, my mother had her master's in interior design. So that's where we started from. And we build just six floor plans. And I welcome you to, we, we can, happy to show you firsthand any of those six. In fact, they all exist down at Grant Park.
So I have a question about the, what percentage of those studio apartments are that much square feet?
There's 27, there's, yeah, 10%.
10%, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Just to double down on the, the green space question. I know that's been a concern about not just this property but other properties as well as, you know, getting rid of green space and then putting things in there. But to, to clarify and I think reiterate, what we're looking at here is, I guess the best way to put it is changing the surface parking that's there and turning it into something different, right? I mean, we're turning it into apartments there. It's not cutting down a completely forested lot and putting up apartments. It's surface lots changing.
Yeah, I mean, and, and from an environmental standpoint, there's probably no bigger eyesore or detriment to certainly quality of water than a surface parking lot and the runoff that comes from that, from the oil and the gas and just the heat from the asphalt. So we're, we're, we're basically recycling an environmental problem into what we think will be an enhancement to the environment.
Mayels? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite anybody who'd like to speak for or against this as a public hearing to come up now. And if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Bob Rash, 545 James Street Southwest, Littleburn, Georgia, 30047. I, I like the development. I think it's great. I have no problem with it. I think, I think it's fantastic. What I wonder about is, did I hear them say that you're changing the future land use? Is, is that correct? Are they changing the future land use? The answer is yes. That's all I want, I want on the record. So mine couldn't have a future land use change, but this one has it. That's all I got.
My name is Ben Boyshanaike. And I am the owner of the process we just went through that was denied. Just like Mr. Rash was mentioning, we are asking for exactly the same thing these gentlemen are going to receive tonight. They are changing the future land use of this property. It's all economics. If you don't change it for them, they can't make money. The same thing we were denied for. At some point in time, we have to be able to make it work for the big guys and the little guys. I'm a little guy. I bought this property since 2004. I planted those plants you see there now with my own hands, me and my wife. At some point in time, we have to make this system work for a small guy versus guys who run big...
I understand you're frustrated.
Let me fin, allow me to finish.
But I want these comments to be about the zoning that we're talking about now.
It is about the zoning because you're changing the future land use for what they're going to ready to build. If you don't change it, they're not going to build it. So what I want, and I haven't, I have not been able to receive this from anyone in the, in the city. Why are they going to get the future land change? And why can we not have it? It's a very simple question. If anyone can explain...
I don't know that they're going, they haven't voted on it yet.
Well, let's see. I mean, they were approved by the planning and, and development. So the question is, if you voted for them, right? We need to ask ourselves the same questions. Why can the little guy have the same thing? I think this gentleman will agree with you. The laws have to apply to everybody fairly. This is equity that we're talking about. It needs to be applied equally. Thank you.
If anybody else that wants to speak for or against this zoning, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Kathy Omeats and I live in a condo countryside, which is right on Spring Lake, Spring Road. Can you, now you hear me? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Hi, my name's Kathy Omeats. And I just recently moved to the area from Michigan this past July. I'm really, I really like Smyrna. And I just moved into the condo though, March 10th. And some of the things I like about it is that it's a, it seems to be a community where I love seeing people out walking. I see that here, families. I think what I also like is that I see families of all income and being able to have a home. So I'm concerned about becoming out of reach to people of modest means. And I can appreciate that the developers are looking at green. I'm really interested in that. That's wonderful. But I'm also concerned about, the biggest concern is, is traffic. And being on Spring Road, when you, from where, I'm one mile from Cobb Parkway and your traffic gets pretty heavy. And so then with this development going down near Target, you're adding, you know, you're adding, what, 277? And if you multiply that times two, potentially you have 554 vehicles, potentially. And I really am concerned about the saturation point of traffic. Now, I know that the people can split. They can go down Cobb Parkway or they can go down Lake, turn left on Village Parkway. They're coming out on Spring Road. Now, there's another zoning request up for June 21st on Campbell at Atlanta Road. You're going to have the same situation. Traffic is going to come down Campbell and dump out at Spring. Or they're going to go down Atlanta Road and they can cut down on Spring again unless they're going the opposite direction. I'm concerned about saturation of traffic, the biggest thing. Smaller items would be though, I'm wondering if they, you know, that, but that's incredibly small units. And I was wondering if they are having, the one gentleman did ask about the price, which I was wondering, but I'm also wondering, are they having laundry units, washing, the ability to wash within the units? Or is there one on site? And because people are very interested, especially professionals. They, they want to live somewhere where they can wash their clothes and not have to leave. I was also wondering, on the trails that they're talking about, are they, are, are there any plans for garbage cans, things of that nature? Because that could be potentially a problem too. I don't know how long the trail is. But people tend to throw things if there's not, they'll, they'll use a garbage can if they see it. And I was also wondering, is it going to be pet-friendly? And he was, speaking as to the parking being reduced, and I think they were referring to profitability and economics. And I understand that there were studies done. But how, how do they know that it's correct? I mean, I came, I, when I first arrived in Atlanta, I was in Sandy Springs in an apartment where there were professionals. It was across from the hospitals. And I noticed the further away from the building you got, the smaller the spaces got. And people get impatient and they slam doors. So in between the traffic and the parking spaces and the garbage cans, that's, you know, what I'm wondering about or concerned about, really. But anyways, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council of Skyler Aikens. And I'm one of those young professionals and I reside at Countryside at Cumberland in Ward Two. First question I wanted to ask the council, has anyone here seen the traffic study? Have any of you looked at this? It was done in 2019 and it was done during Thanksgiving week. So before us, we don't even have a current COVID-conditioned traffic study. And it was done on November the 20th, 2019. I refreshed my internet browser all weekend trying to get the traffic plan and it mysteriously showed up today. So that's a procedural issue that I have. The second procedural issue that I have is, in order to see the zoning sign that fulfills the legal requirement in our code, you literally have to break your neck to turn to see the sign as you're turning right coming from Wendy Hill Road on Cobb Parkway to see the sign. And the only reason I know about the sign was because a veteran that feeds the ducks at the pond told us where the sign was. It's not even in a visible place. The third point I want to read is directly from the traffic study. And I want to address the carbon environmental issues too. This is directly from the 2019 Pine Traffic Study that was just available a few hours ago. So I don't think anyone here has read it because it was only available today. This intersection operates at an acceptable level of service in AM peak hour. This intersection operates at an acceptable level of service in AM peak hour under the build conditions without any significant increase in average delay. However, the next sentence says, "The proposed development results in an increase of delay at the intersection of Lake Park Drive and US 41, which we know as Cobb Parkway, leading to an unacceptable level of service in the AM peak hour." At the intersection, and then it goes on to say, "Another design year build under the current conditions." At the intersection of Lake Park Drive and US 41, the development results in increased delay and unacceptable level of service in the PM operating year as well, and acceptable in the AM, but it then goes on to say some other things. One of the most indicting things from this, to me, really occurs at the last page here on the executive summary. Due to the intersection failing without additional traffic, the additional project traffic from the development will result in unacceptable levels of service in the AM peak hour of the opening and design year at the intersection of US and Lake Park Drive. And it goes on to say, basically, if you read this, again, it was just available, it continually tells you, this is a disaster for traffic. And we didn't even conduct this study until 2019, and it's very concerning to me, especially to my council member from Ward Two, that we didn't even bother to read a traffic study from 2019. Also, I'd like to know how you're decreasing pollution and carbon footprint by taking a surface lot that's currently enveloped in our tree canopy and adding almost 300 people with their enormous carbon footprints, along with their vehicles, which have enormous carbon footprints. We're under oath, I was sworn under oath here before I came to speak, and I cannot so the straight face say that changing existing tree canopy from a, what is a tree canopy covering a surface lot into a 300-unit apartment complex somehow is good for the environment? I was just put under oath. I'm not going to get up here and say that. And people that are proposing and developing this city shouldn't say that either. And I would also ask the staff to do a better job of making sure that we have updated traffic studies. And this isn't just an anomaly with me. I've asked several people in my neighborhood, I've asked members of this body. Quite frankly, it should also be unacceptable that we're using nearly three-year-old traffic data as well. I think that's, that this is something that's kind of breathtaking for me. I expect better from the city, and I expect better for people being put under oath to be told about the traffic conditions, the urban forest that's there, the carbon footprint, and the bad faith effort that you started with where you chose to put the sign notifying the public about it. Again, traffic study from 2019. Please read it and consider it before you vote on it. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Akins. Anybody else who'd like to come up and speak for or against this? After the citizen input is concluded, I'll invite you all back up to address some of the concerns.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Jamie Fine. My first question is, why are we all here? I'm questioning legality of this discussion in the first place. There was only one poorly placed notification sign on Lake Park Drive prior to the planning and zoning hearing and prior to this meeting itself. It was on Lake Park Drive. It was not facing traffic. It was near the property. It was not at the property. I'm very disappointed because I think to notify a city of a change of this magnitude and a development of this magnitude that affects this many people in our city, I think this was insufficient. And I don't think that it was adequate to the citizens, for the citizens of this city. I'm questioning that. I don't think it was the notification that the citizens of Smyrna deserve, given what we're looking at. I looked at the notes for the staff. Why would our staff support an increase in density? If you have a variance, why would you make changes to these variances, especially an unpopular one like increasing density? We have had so many developments increasing the density, increasing our density, increasing our density. Y'all have voted for so many of, so many developments increasing the density of this city. Why would we, why would we change a variance to increase even more density on these staff memo, staff notes? Why would staff support reducing a minimum floor area from 900 square feet to 653 square feet? Are we building apartments? Are we building jail cells? It says the studio is 412 square feet. A one-bedroom is 554 square feet. A two-bedroom is 1,042 square feet. These apartments started $1,000. How, how can you be competitive with so many developments that are actually at or close to the battery that everybody raves about being so close to the battery? How can you be competitive for the same rent range? This has no amenities. Okay, you've got a pool. It's not a great location. You're on Cobb Parkway. Nothing much to look at. The units are really small. You're at a property with power lines. You've got no view and notorious traffic. You're right at Wendy Hill, which is one of the most notorious, busy, traffic intersections, definitely in the city, possibly the state. Yes, there's talk of improving it, but that's going to be decades down the road. The county is just now getting to doing a study on it. So what's so great about that? The bike path is nice, but the bike path is not the property. We are talking about developing a property, not a bike path. People are not buying the bike path. And if you're on a bike path, you're in pollution, Cobb Parkway. The mountain, by the way, guys, is in Kennesaw. I'm Tar Heel-born, but I am a tenacious bulldog. So I'm born and bred a Tar Heel, but here I am. That mountain's in Kennesaw, and look at the map and see where that Chattahoochee River is. It's not right there. The path, I know that path. I lived in what was Post Village for a very long time, 13 years. I've been in this area over 30 years. I know the path around that property very well. So I know it goes nowhere. It's nice that you want it to, but we're talking about your property. Nice job, though. Why would you decrease the parking from 1,005 spaces to 515 spaces? Why would the staff support that? There are 277 units, plus workspace, plus retail, plus guests, plus roommates, plus what? You've got variances. Again, why make exceptions in this case? Are the traffic improvements going to be resolved ahead of approving this? I think everybody needs to look at those, that traffic study, look at the traffic reports. They need to be. This is one of the busiest corridors of Cobb County. It is getting busier by the day.
Ms. Fine, you're approaching a minute over your time. I just want to make you aware of that to try and wrap up.
Oh, okay. Sorry, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Mr. Norton, Mr. Lindley, Mr. Wagner, y'all. Campaign, you promised to pump the brakes on the high-density development. You campaigned on sustainability. You have upset a number of citizens by going back on those. You've hurt the morale of citizens, your actions in the past developments that you've approved. You've caused disappointment, anger, and lack of trust. And you guys, I hate to say it, and in our city government as well, a lot of people are not here. A lot of people are not speaking up, and it's very sad because they need to, they need to let you know how they feel. And take that money article from 2018 down on the Smyrna website. This community is no longer fighting the sprawl of greater Atlanta, as that article said. It's not the great place to live as it was once. People are leaving.
I respectfully disagree with that last comment, but thank you for your comments. Anybody else want to come up and say anything for or against this zoning item? I'd invite the applicant back up. Several things were mentioned as far as traffic study, whether it's pet-friendly trashcans, laundry, all those kinds, the sign placement. Y'all want to address some of that stuff so that...
So I'll start with the easy ones. Yes, there are washer-dryers in all the units. We would be likely to put trashcans along the route or benches and things to make the trail usable, nice trail. So those are the kind of things that are definitely going to be a part of that trail feature, just like it would be in any outdoor amenity that we have. We don't want trash on the grounds because we want it to be an amenity that people use and people, people use and people enjoy, and is a credit to the community. As far as the traffic impact study is concerned...
Can I ask you a question before you move on to that? Because I couldn't hear the first part of that.
Yeah, so we will have washer-dryers. We will put benches and trashcans along the trail, just like we would any courtyard amenity we would have inside or outside the community. I mean, it's something we want people to use, so having it littered or trashed would defeat the purpose of putting all that investment. It's going to be a million-plus-dollar investment, so we want to keep it nice and make it look good and make it used. As far as the traffic...
Does each unit have the washer-dryer connections?
Yes, yes. Every, every unit nowadays, well, at least everyone that we buy, build, is...
They come with the washer.
They come, not just a connection, you have washer-dryer in your unit. So it's part of your, you don't pay extra for that, it just comes with it. You know, again, how do we know that this will work? I will begin to say that, you know, our headquarters is in an office building that shares the deck with the apartments next door, so we've put our money where our mouth is there. And again, it's our investment. We, if we're wrong, it hurts us. It's, it's in our best interest to know how to make that parking work, and we spent a lot of years figuring that out. As far as the actual, the traffic survey is concerned, you know, there was, there is a, a point here is about what comes after that. There is, the gentleman was correct in how he cited that, but he also said, "Due to the intersection failing without addition..." Oh, hold on. "The intersection of US 41 at Lake Park Drive currently experiences significant delay in the afternoon hours and will have an unacceptable level of service in the design year without any additional development. Due to the intersection failing without additional project traffic, the addition of project traffic from the development is not the cause of the unacceptable level of service." So again, I think it's just important to be clear about what's, what the issues are and whether or not these are contributing. The other thing is, by having people coming in and out of the site in opposing manners, that's always one of the best ways to balance your traffic impact of people moving to town, is to try to get mixed use, which I know is very important for the community. I think I covered pretty much all of them. I'll let Clay say a few words.
Yeah, thank you. And yeah, I think Paul covered most of it, but, but things, I mean, that's part of why we bring Copenhagen Eyes in to help design these trails. They, they create trashcans at angles that are fun, that people will use more often. And, and the whole goal, which I think may have been missed, is, is the goal is to create a trail that's connected to the battery. And so we've helped, you know, pay for and do a study for a design of that, and our goal is to get that started and to make that happen. And I don't think that, yes, I, traffic is a problem in Atlanta. That is no secret. You know, and housing is a major problem in America. Today, 80% of Americans can't afford the price of a new home in America. 80% of Americans can't afford the new price of a home in America. 40% of Americans can't afford the price of a new apartment in America. America is not a sustainable country. We have pushed everybody out of urban areas, so they have to own cars, we have to build roads, and they have to drive. And our goal is to try to urbanize America and get people near where they work, get people near where they shop, and get people apartments they can afford to live in. And we would appreciate your support in helping us achieve that goal. It is a main part of our mission. We are focused on what we call essential housing in America, and we are very proud of our track record from an environmental standpoint. We will do less tree disturbances on this property than probably any other multifamily property built probably ever in Smyrna of this size, and, and we're at a price point that nobody else would be able to deliver for new product. And we, we want to be something you're proud to have in your community, and if you don't want us in our, in, in your community, we, we understand that. There are plenty of communities that want us. I would encourage you to call the mayor of any city that we own a Link Apartment community in, or any city council member, and I think everyone I will tell you, they're proud to have Link Apartments and grow properties in their community. The other thing that we do that is unique, that I don't believe any other company in America does it, and if you live with us five years, we cap your rent at the CPI index. So we do what we say, and we protect those. Today, we have almost 400 residents with capped rents, some of them saving as much as $400 and $500 a month. With that, I don't know if there's anything else I can add, but I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak for or against this item?
Just about 30 seconds more. Honestly, when he speaks about, I, I can appreciate their efforts, but when they're talking, my, my condo is 1,244 square feet. If you're talking about half of that, I do not know how anybody can live there. And on top of that, they're going to pay $1,000? My payment with HOA is only $1,100. And we've got a beautiful community. We can keep building Smyrna with green. What I see being done is great, you know, and I just wanted to say, do you want to have a community where people, the professionals that come that are scraping by, can't even have people into dinner because it's too small? They're forced to go out to eat?
Okay.
Like that in New York, but that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. We're going to close the public hearing portion of this item and open it up to council for discussion. This is in Mr. Wagner's district, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Wagner.
Yeah, before I have any words on it, I'll open it up. If any of the council members have any comments or further questions? No? On this one, you know, we look at, what I'm looking at with housing issues, are a lot of the things that were brought up that supply is not keeping pace with demand, and this is a product of apartments that we don't have in Smyrna, something geared towards young professionals, next to offices. I think it's an interesting opportunity to couple with our efforts here in the city on economic development. We've got offices that are being renovated right in that corridor. The office on this property is in the same way, and hopefully the people living in these apartments would be working at those offices, which, to the point about environmental issues, sustainability, one of the best things you can do is reduce the amount of time that people are spending in their cars. So if we've got homes that are next to the places that they're working, that are near the places that they want to go, and start investments in focusing on trails and bike usage and pedestrians, I think that's a win for us. I think that's a win for us. Um, I have a lot I could say about housing and things like that, but I'll leave it at that and, um, make a motion to approve item four D as previously presented.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Wagner. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved five-one with Mr. Pickens voting in the negative. Next item, the next three, I believe, are variances. Um, item four E twenty-twenty-one dash one-nine-one, public hearing V twenty-one dash zero-four-four. Reduce the rear setback from thirty feet to twenty-four feet for a deck landlot three-eighty-four, six-thirty-two Austin Drive, David Samani. Mr. Bennett, the background.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant is requesting a variance to reduce the rear setback from thirty feet to twenty-one feet to replace a deck on an existing home. Section eight oh one of the zoning ordinance requires a rear setback of thirty feet for lots zoned R fifteen. Staff recommends approval of this variance.
Okay, this is, um, a public hearing. Uh, anybody who wishes to speak for or against, please be sworn in by our city attorney.
I'm the owner of the property.
He still got his way in. Rusty, anything before the applicant speaks that you want to say?
Uh, yeah, um, as we talked about earlier, this is a simple request. They're requesting to replace the existing deck on the back of the property. The house pretty much abuts the rear setback line and the deck encroaches into the rear setback. Um, they're actually improving the existing scenario by reducing the deck by three feet, so they're re- reduce, they're requesting a reduction in the rear setback from, uh, thirty feet down to twenty-four because the deck has to meet the, the setback requirements for the principal building. That's it, we're recommending approval.
Uh, yes, so I'm David Samani, I'm the owner of the property. We're just trying to put a deck on the back of our house. The, uh, the back of the house was built in such a way that, uh, there's a door, so, the door is seven feet off the ground, so without a deck, it's another set of stairs and a pad, I guess. Uh, so, we think the house, uh, looks better with a deck and kind of meets everybody in the, everybody in the area, I guess, also has decks. Uh, our, the person directly behind us doesn't have, uh, their house. It's a very large lot, I guess it's over an acre, so, uh, the deck would be blocked by a tree and then, as it says in the memorandum, it's over a hundred feet. So, between the, uh, my house and where their house exists.
You must really want this deck to sit through all these rezonings for it.
Well, I, I tell you, that, so when, yeah, it, it was only supposed to be like, come at seven, it'll be ten minutes, you know?
Well, sorry for the long wait. This is in, uh, this is in Ward four. I'm going to turn it over to Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess I should be embarrassed because this is the, my neighbor and we, we don't know each other, but...
Yes.
With that, uh, I will make a motion to approve, um, item E, or, excuse me, four E two oh two-one dash one-nine-one.
Have a motion to approve. We have a second by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved six-zero. Thank you for being here and for waiting so long to have that done.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Item F twenty-twenty-one dash one-nine-two, this is a public hearing V twenty-one dash zero-four-five. Allow encroachment into fifty-foot undisturbed stream buffer setback for a deck, landlot eight-ten, twenty-nine forty-six, Woodruff Drive, Sue Ellen A. Step. Rusty, you want to come on up?
Yes, sir. This is for a variance for, um, the replacement of an existing deck in, um, the city's stream buffer. Um, the deck was constructed prior to the adoption of the city's stream ordinance. Um, the deck's in disrepair, she's going to replace it, the exact same size. We're recommending approval of the, of the requested variance.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody here who wishes to speak for or against this item, come on up and be sworn in. Okay, okay. We will, uh, go ahead and close the public hearing, and this is in Ward one. Mr. Pickens.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve for F twenty-twenty-one dash one-nine-two.
Have a motion, second by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved six-zero. Thank you, and thank you for waiting as well. Um, item G twenty-twenty-one dash one-nine-three, it's also a public hearing, variance twenty-one dash zero-four-six. Allow new construction on lot of record below minimum lot size requirements. Landlot three zero four, four thirty-six, Smyrna Powder Springs Road, AOS four fifty-four Land LLC. Rusty, you want to come on up?
Yes, this is a request for, uh, four thirty-six Smyrna Powder Springs Road. Uh, this is an existing lot of record. Um, this is a property zoned R fifteen. Um, the property is currently around twelve thousand square feet, so it doesn't meet the minimum lot area requirements. So they need a variance to be able to build a new home on this lot. It's currently vacant, doesn't have anything on it. Um, they'll be building a new home in accordance to the R fifteen standards setbacks and impervious surface area requirements. We're recommending approval as well.
Any questions, Rusty? This is a public hearing. I'd invite anybody who wants to speak for or against this to come up and be sworn in. You've already been sworn in. Come on, come, so come on up, come on up and speak.
Okay. Well, thanks for having me again. Yeah, like I said, I, I, I think Smyrna's doing a great job. I'm, 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 I'm glad that the, uh, I, I like that last development that got approved. As far as this, uh, variance, this lot is directly attached to the last lot we were talking about, our rezoning. I guess that's about it. It, it was a lot of record since nineteen sixty-two. We want to build a house. Um, I think Rusty just said it as I was walking back in, um, to the, uh, make sure we meet the impervious surface, which is thirty-five percent of the lot size. When we applied for the variance, we intended to do a house, renovate, house, all to match the neighborhood. I don't think we have, it, it's not, it's not a valuable lot anymore if we're capped at twenty-four hundred, twenty, twenty-two hundred square feet, twenty-three hundred square feet house. So I'd like to be able to build whatever we can on that lot, because five houses away are four thousand square foot houses. I just don't want to be capped if, if that's all we have, because there's...
I cannot, what is your, uh, request? I couldn't hear...
Um, I'm sorry. I just don't want to be, I just don't want to be capped at the size of house. We were, we were planning to build, like, we talked about, having the three houses all match, so they would all be twenty-two, twenty-three hundred square feet. But normally, when somebody builds on a lot, they can build as big as they want on the footprint, as long as it's not impervious. I'm just, I, we're not going to build a giant thing, I just don't want to be capped at twenty-two hundred square feet.
Rusty, you want to address that?
The floor area requirement is a minimum of two hundred and twenty, two hundred, twenty-two hundred square feet. So he can build whatever he wants to that's bigger than that. Um, but his footprint and then all the hard surfaces cannot exceed thirty-five percent of the total lot area, so...
I agree, I agree with that.
I think we just solved our own, I think we just solved our own problem.
Okay. That's all I got.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak for or against this item? Yes, sir. If you'll state your name and address again for the record, please.
My name is Bamb, excuse me, Bamb Shanikey, twenty-four fifty-one, coming back with... I think I correctly predicted that, the people that came behind me the previous time, that this body was going to give them exactly what we asked for, but were denied for. For this process to work, the big guys have to get the same thing that the little guys get. When we start picking and choosing, right, then this process doesn't work. The people that are the staffing, uh, the staff of the city, right, we work with them. We provide documents to them. But at the end of the day, if they're going to be granting the change in future land use for some big corporation, the same consideration needs to be given to the small guys. That's all I really have to say. Councilman Wilkinson, thank you for your time the other day, really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, we'll close this public hearing. I just will say, our staff, we rely on heavily, and they're our professional staff, and they do a great job, uh, making recommendations to us. So, just putting that out in the world, they really appreciate all y'all, what you do for us. This is in Ward five. I'll turn it over to Ms. Wilkinson.
Okay, thank you. Um, at this time, I'd like to move to approve item four G two oh two-one dash one-nine-three. Um, this is a public hearing for the variance twenty-one dash four forty, uh, zero four-six. Allow new construction on lot of record below minimum lot size requirements. Landlot three oh four dash four-three-six, Smyrna Powder Springs, uh, Smyrna Powder Springs Road, AOS four fifty-four Land LLC.
Have a motion to approve. We have a second by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. That's approved six-zero, thank you. Item five is privileged licenses, we have none. Item six is formal business. Six A, ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash zero-nine, this is a public hearing. Approval of code amendments to the city alcoholic beverage ordinance with regards to alcohol pouring licenses for private dog parks. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The community development department has received requests for alcohol pouring licenses for private dog parks. Under the city's alcohol beverage ordinance, requires pouring licenses to have at least fifty percent of sales derived from the sale of food prepared to be consumed on premises. Private dog parks cannot meet that requirement. Staff has reviewed the city's alcohol beverage ordinance and is proposing code amendments to address the issue. Community development recommends approval of the proposed text amendments.
I have Mr. Gould handle this, but Rusty, you want to come up? And, so, so what I understand is that this has never been contemplated before, and we're trying to make it fair to the others, other businesses who exist that have to abide by a certain percentage.
So, um, our current alcoholic beverage ordinance for on-premise pouring, really restricts you to fifty percent of your total gross revenue. Fifty percent can be alcohol sales, provided that you have a full kitchen and forty, at least forty seats within the area. For other uses that have pouring, have pouring licenses that don't meet those requirements, our ordinance, and those would be like wine specialty shops, cigar specialty, the growler shops. They are restricted to twenty-five percent of their gross revenue dedicated to alcohol sales. So with our proposed ordinance, it would allow them to have alcohol sales, they'd be limited to twenty-five percent of their gross revenue, to alcohol sales. And then, um, they also have to have a minimum membership of twenty-five members to the, to the dog park facility. In addition, gross revenue will count the memberships, uh, any retail sales, any non-alcoholic beverage sales. So they're proposing coffee, stuff like that, food, and then, um, any training services and stuff like that, that's provided on-site. So, that, that's what I have for you.
Any questions, Rusty? All right, no discussion. Um, this is a public hearing. I'd invite anybody who wants to speak for or against this to come up now and be sworn in. Are there anybody left? We'll go, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll turn it over to Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just moved to approve item four G twenty-twenty-one dash one-nine-three as previously read.
It's actually item six A, but, uh, that's okay. Uh, we have a motion by Mr. Gould and a second by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved six-zero. Four G was like an hour ago.
Get the wrong one marked. Sorry.
Seeing that the hour's getting late, we're going to table the budget. No, I'm just kidding, y'all. I'm just kidding, y'all. Uh, all right, formal business, uh, item B. This might be the latest we've ever started a budget presentation at nine-twenty-three, but I'll invite our staff up. This is the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-two, uh, proposed budget. Kristen Landon, floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. If everyone, uh, brought your air mattresses, you can just get settled in because we'll be here for a while. No, I'm just kidding. We will, um, we will try to get through this as...
Set the timer, Heather, okay?
We, we will try to get through this as efficiently as possible without sacrificing quality of information or presentation.
Y'all do what you need to do, we've got plenty of time.
Yes, sir. So, to start out, we are presenting, just to be clear, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget. That is the year that runs from July first of this year, twenty-twenty-one, through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, and just as an overview here, we'll, uh, we'll go through each of our funds, talk about our revenues and expenditures, um, discuss fee changes, our outstanding debt obligations, as well as proposed capital projects and personnel recommendations. So as we look here, um, we have an overview of our total proposed budget compared with our fiscal year twenty-one budget. We'll see a, uh, just to go through what all of these funds are. The general fund is, uh, the traditional services you think of for local government in addition to, uh, public safety, so police and fire. Uh, special revenue funds is our hotel motel fund, the emergency nine-one-one fund, along with several other smaller ones, CDBG, which are, is our, um, community development block grant, donation, special fees, confiscated assets, multiple grants. This is also where, uh, this past year, the federal fund for the, the CARES Act are held as well. And if you look at our special revenue funds, you'll see a decrease, um, this year of about two-point-seven million. That is due to us spending around two-point-nine million of our, uh, CARES grant from the federal government this year, and we'll only be spending, uh, we're budgeted about a hundred and forty-eight thousand for next year, so there's a significant decrease there. And then our capital projects, that is our, um, general fund, CIP, our E nine-one-one CIP, along with twenty-sixteen SPOST. That's where, uh, the big number comes from, is our twenty-sixteen SPOST, and you'll see a decrease there as well. That is due to, uh, lower spending on SPOST. The main expenditure there, which we'll speak about later, is Wendy Hill Road. We spent about fourteen million last year, that's what we budgeted, and we have about eleven million this year, um, in terms of revenue for Wendy Hill. We are budgeting to receive eleven-point-three million from Cobb County. We, we're budgeting to, um, receive seven million this year from Cobb County. We received eleven last year for a total of eighteen for that project. And as I said, we'll discuss that later. Uh, as we move down our internal service fund, that is our vehicle replacement fund, and our enterprise funds, that, that is our water sewer fund, water sewer CIP, and, um, stormwater fund as well. And there's just a, uh, a very marginal increase there that's due to, um, an increased transfer we'll speak about for our water sewer fund, along with, um, increase for our water sewer CIP as well. So as we go to our, our next slide, uh, we see our revenues versus expenditures for this year. Beginning at the top, you'll see our general fund is balanced as is, uh, required by law, and we have balanced that this year. Uh, special revenues is balanced as well, however, um, as I mentioned, our hotel motel fund is included in that, and that has been balanced using, uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars from reserves. Uh, we'll speak about that later as well. We do not anticipate using that full amount. Our capital projects, uh, you'll see a big, uh, around ten million dollars more in expenditures than revenues. Through, and that is in relation to the twenty-sixteen SPOST. We'll be planning on spending more this year than we take in. However, the first four years of this, we took in, uh, significantly more revenues and expenditures. Uh, where we are now, we have saved up significant, uh, sufficient fund balance to, to cover the cost of, um, our expenditures being more than our revenues. Um, as I said, last year was the first year that our expenditures exceeded our revenues, so it's a, it's a balance there. And for our internal service funds, you'll see our revenues are higher than our expenditures. That is because we, uh, we budget the average annual contribution for our vehicle replacement fund, through a transfer from our water sewer fund, along with the general fund. And the reason that we do that is to put a larger amount into fund balance, so we'll be putting back more than we spend this year. However, uh, we know that... However, we know that in fiscal years 24 and 25, we have some extremely expensive fire trucks that we'll have to buy. So in those years, we want to have enough fund balance to cover those larger purchases. And then the last thing, you'll see there are enterprise funds. We are also budgeted to collect more revenues than we plan to spend. That is because infrastructure is quite expensive, expensive. So we are comfortable budgeting that, more revenues and expenditures, because we know that in fiscal year 20, we had to pay for $4.3 million of Windy Hill modifications out of that fund. So that is why we, we budget more revenues over expenditures in there. So we'll look at our revenues and then we'll take a peek at our expenditures as well. As you can see, 58% of our general fund revenues, and I should, I should note that these are specifically general fund. We just looked at the total budget and this is only our general fund. And another note, if you look in the bottom right-hand corner of all these slides, even going back, you'll see page numbers. And that is the reference for our budget book, which you'll be able to find online in our city clerk's office, as along with the circulation desk at the Smyrna Library. So if you look at these revenues, our top revenues, property taxes. This includes several things, including real property taxes, personal property taxes, vehicles, franchise taxes, and taxes on public utilities. So it encompasses a little more. If you look at our budget book and list of revenues, you'll see property taxes and it may appear smaller, but this brings in a few different ones. Our, our next largest source of revenue, revenue is charges for services, which makes up about 18%. This includes things like sanitation charges, prisoner housing revenues that we collect in the jail, commercial recycling, and then any revenues we collect with parks, whether it be rentals or programming that we do. Moving down, just to quickly summarize what our other revenues are, we have other taxes that is, include insurance premium tax, financial institutions tax, alcoholic beverage excise tax. We have inter-fund transfers, both from our water sewer fund and hotel motel fund. There are transfers that come into the general fund. This also includes, when we close out our CIP projects, we may have balance remaining that's transferred in. Moving down, license and permits, licenses and permits. We have our business licenses is a significant source of revenue. Building permits, HVAC permits, electrical permits, intergovernmental, that is what we collect from Cobb County. From this House Bill 489 a few years ago, is for services provided that the city would otherwise fall under, that the, I'm sorry, services the city provides that would otherwise fall under Cobb County's domain. Fines and forfeitures, this is mainly our municipal court fines, but this also includes probation or library fines. And lastly, miscellaneous is kind of the catch-all, things like maintenance fees, rents, royalties, and interests as well. So if you look at expenditures, as I said, we have a balanced budget this year as we, as we always do. And then, just going down, public safety is 28% of that is fire and police, general government. This is things, all of our parks and recreation divisions, community development, library administration, that's about 20%. Around 20% as well as public works. This includes building grounds, maintenance and shop, highways and streets, recycling, and sanitation. Insurance and other benefits, health insurance, retirement, prescriptions, all of those things. And then, going down, debt, which we'll speak about here in a few minutes, along with our CIP and vehicle replacement make up the remaining expenditures. So a few notable general fund expenditures, I just mentioned benefits. Our general fund that's split among the different funds, so our general fund absorbs 90% of our benefits. And you'll see a few increases at the top there. $290,000 increase to health insurance, that certainly seems like a big number. It's pretty on par with what we've seen in recent years. So just to give a little background, we're on track to spend about 5.9 million this year for health insurance out of a $6 million budget. However, we are unsure about the effect of those first few months during the pandemic of this fiscal year, July, August, September, when doctors' visits were significantly decreased. And so our costs were significantly decreased as well. So we're seeing about a little over 200, $290,000 increase up to $6.28 million for fiscal year 22. This is based on historical trends. We've seen that number jump way up a few years. For context, in fiscal year 19, we paid 6.2 million for, for health insurance. So we are, we are comfortable with that number, knowing that it has the, the capability to increase. And as another note, for prescriptions, which are kind of related, we, we've seen an 18% decrease for that. So, you know, we do see one go up, we see one go down as well. Going down for benefits, we're also budgeting for a increase to our retirement contributions. We participate in the Georgia Municipal Employees Benefit System. So, we have a few different retirement plans depending on when employees were hired. We have an older version and a, and a newer one as well, due to changes. This is the pension component of that. So every year, and we may still be getting some, some newer information, we work with an actuary to look at our data, make assumptions, and recommend an annual contribution. Our contribution this year is 2.7 million, in line with increases that we've seen in previous years. So then, just some other high points here. If we go down, we have $43,000, actually about $43,500 budgeted for website redesign and implementation, hoping to, to revamp that, make some improvements. And then, the last point there, we see we have $455,000 for contingency. 464 of that is set aside for merit raises. However, I, I'll note those are based on performance appraisals given each year to our employees. However, that comes back before council in January to approve it. So, that is set aside in contingency, but it is not upon approval of the budget. That hasn't been approved yet. It will come back before the council. And then we have $191,000 unallocated. That is for anything that can pop up during the city. And as you all know well, there, there are a lot of things that, we can plan for a lot, but there's always going to be some unexpected things that pop up. So, we, we try to set aside money for that each year. Some other, some other things that, that we feel are of note for general fund expenditures. We budgeted $185,000 for traffic signal optimization. This was planned in fiscal year 21, but a lot of things were cut once we, once we knew the pandemic was going to take a big hit out of our revenues. So, the traffic signal optimization is a citywide project to optimize our signal timings. And we also have $35,000 set aside to convert our signal software to Georgia Department of Transportation, the same software they have that we feel will help improve our, our traffic flow in the city, which we know is, is certainly a concern and an issue. We, moving down, we have $30,000 for urban development, redevelopment plan. This, that is for the North, North Smyrna Opportunity Zone. The current designation as an opportunity zone expires at the end of this calendar year in December. So we are required by state law to submit a new plan every 10 years. For those who don't know, those zones, among other things, can help provide job tax credits for those who, who hire employees and that are within those opportunity zones. And then we have $30,000 for heritage celebrations. These are for things like Black History Month and Hispanic Heritage Month celebrations. We've had the past few years that, that we feel have been very successful. We have $15,000 set aside for, for those two, Black History Month and Hispanic Heritage Month, that we feel are going to keep improving. And then, the, the last point there, you see $60,000 for painting the interior of our city hall. This has been needed for quite some time, and hopefully we can improve the, the, the look of everyone that comes in and spruce it up a little bit. So we'll quickly go through all of our funds, look at revenues and expenditures for other funds aside from the general fund. First, we have E911. E911 fees, the, the largest source of revenue. They are collected from telecommunications providers. So, just as an overview for our E911 fund, the city operates its own 911 call center. So, if you make an emergency call within the city of Smyrna, it gets routed to our dispatchers. One of the other sources of revenue, intergovernmental revenue, is an intergovernmental agreement. We receive these revenues from other cities, which is small compared to the E911 fees we collect. A few years back, we added powder springs, add some additional revenue, so. But there is, has been a pretty, pretty predictable steady, steady flow of revenue there. One other thing to note for the revenues for E911 is a transfer from the general fund. E911 does typically require a subsidy from the general fund to fully fund our operations. Last year, that transfer was around 300,000, so we've actually decreased about 20,000 down to 280. And then, at the bottom, you can see just salaries, benefits, and other operating expenditures. Our hotel motel fund, our hotel motel taxes, our, our biggest source of revenue. That is a tax on room nights occupied in Smyrna hotels. So, for a little background of this, this was one of our revenues that was hardest hit by the, by the pandemic. We typically collect around 1.5 million, so we bumped that down to 1.2 million for our fiscal year 21 budget. We're actually on pace to collect around 900,000. So I say that to explain that we are still taking a cautious approach. We are optimistic that travel will obviously increase as those, you know, as more and more people are getting vaccinated, they're getting out and willing to travel to stay in hotels, but we're still trying to be as optimistic as possible while being cautious. So, to, to, to move on, the line below that, you see use of hotel motel reserves at around 238,000. We do not anticipate having to use this full amount. We typically, when collections are normal, are able to, to transfer some to reserves. However, as those hotel motel taxes increase, which if it gets anywhere back to normal, that amount of reserves that we use will go down. So, we, we are very hopeful and optimistic that that will be the case. But again, we felt it's our job to be, to be cautious and to put together a good plan to go forward. And as we look at our expenditures, too, part of our hotel motel taxes, we have an agreement with the Cobb Marietta Coliseum and Exhibit Hall Authority, which is the payments to the Galleria. We also transfer a fixed percentage, about 37.5%, or exactly 37.5%. We transfer that to the general fund, which you see is 358,000. Those last two lines, operating costs and salaries and benefits, are what it takes to fund our community relations department, which is funded out of our hotel motel fund. And just a note, we will be monitoring these revenues throughout the year to see kind of where we stand. We don't make that transfer till the end of the year, so we, we will have a good idea of where we'll be standing as we go throughout the year. Lastly, our water sewer fund. If, as you look at the top there, annual increases by the Cobb County Marietta Water Authority are automatically passed on to, to customers. For the past three years before this year, that increase was 2%. This year it was 2.5%. So this budget takes that into account and factors that in to our revenues. And then as we go down to our expenses, you will see that the largest expense by far is the whole, is the wholesale purchase of water. And then, our transfer to the water sewer CIP, that is what is funded out of this. There's an increase of about $100,000. And we also transfer to the general fund out of this, which the general fund provides support to the water sewer fund. So we always budget a transfer. It's intended to reimburse, reimburse the general fund for services provided, whether that be finance, IT, HR, overhead costs. And that is determined based on a formula that we have, which is a strict cost allocation formula. So that's where that number comes from. There's about an $88,000 increase in our transfer to the general fund this year as opposed to, as opposed to last year. And that is due to some positions that have moved around, that have moved out of the water sewer fund into the general fund. So it's, the general fund is being reimbursed for that, along with just general cost increases. As we go here to our fee changes, so I'll, I will direct anyone who would want to know more about parks and rec specifically to, they have several fee increases. Our budget book has those. Many of them are structural rather than based on money, so it's restructuring how they do some of theirs. But there's, there are several tweaks in there. So again, our budget book, page 25, may be the best place to get a full idea of those. Police as well has one very small one. They're actually reducing the cost. It's just making color copies. They're reducing it from $5 to $1. Community development is making a few small tweaks, one of which is adding a technology fee. We have purchased software to kind of make our plan review process go online. So we have a technology fee associated with all transactions with that, along with a town home review fee, which previously didn't exist. And that's equal to, to the other review fees that we have. So a few larger ones, we, we discussed the water increase. Two significant fee changes that, that are notable, one of which is a sanitation fee that is built into this budget. However, it is a sanitation increase only to commercial customers, not to residential. Since 2018, we have been absorbing a 3% increase to our sanitation budget each year, and we have not passed that along since then. So from the, our vendor who provides our commercial sanitation, in fiscal year 19, 20, 21, we have taken a 3% increase and we have not passed any of those along. So we are proposing a 3.5% increase, again, only to commercial customers, not to residential. That represents around $114,000 in revenue. There's also a slight sanitation revenue increase just from what we're seeing, what we've collected this year. The other notable fee change that we are proposing is a streetlight fee. So, having taken a survey of other cities and counties in our area, most every city and county assesses a, a streetlight fee to their residents. And this money is simply, or this fee is simply to recoup what we already pay for streetlights, which we have not done. So we have been bearing the burden of that streetlight fee, which last year was around $800,000. So the fee that we are proposing is only to recoup that money, not to, to make additional money. And all of the money collected through that streetlight fee will be used as part of our, what we're calling green energy projects to fund things, whether it be HVAC, replacement generators, a ton of other things I know that we have in store for that. So, to the specifics of that, there will be a separate rate, what we are proposing for residents and businesses or commercial industrial. So the residential rate, it, our proposal is to have that reflected in our, on our property tax bill. So it'll, it'll be shown as one amount, but broken down by month. So for residential, it'll be $3.50 a month, so the, what will be on property tax bills is $42 per year. For, for businesses, that's commercial and industrial, it is $7 per month. And so on the property tax bill, it will be $84 per year. And again, that is projected to collect around 800,000 that will be used for some CIP, green energy projects, that I will let Kristin talk about when we get there. And I'll, I'll pass it on to Kristin now.
I will try to be as quick as possible, but still give you all the information. Debt is a big topic of conversation, has been in several years. This budget has a little over $52 million as our debt outstanding for the year. The amount scheduled for fiscal '22 is a little over $12 million. We have budgeted, that number, I'm sorry, that number includes almost $500,000 from the TAD fund. Those are TAD bonds that were issued in 2019. It was a, a refinance of agreement that we had had in place with a, a private company. And we refinanced that into TAD bonds that are paid exclusively from the, the collections related to the TAD in that district. During this current fiscal year, we actually put a little over a million dollars more into the principal than we had budgeted. This budget assumes that we are going to pay an additional 1.3 million towards that bond debt. Without these extra payments, the bond debt would extend into 2040. Obviously, as we continue to apply additional principal to that, we're hoping to pay those bonds off a lot sooner than that. The total amount coming from the general fund to cover our bonds is almost $4 million, $3 million, 929. We are going to use $100,000 from previously committed funds several years ago. Council set aside money for future debt obligations. For the last several years, we've used about 100,000 of that each year to, to supplement our funding. We still have, um, over a million dollars in there, um, going forward. Um, we also have, um, about a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, um, related to Talavolorum. That's going, that was collected in previous years, uh, before the law change. And that money is going to pay the interest on the twenty sixteen, uh, Wendy Hill bonds. The other, the, the largest portion of this twelve million dollars is seven point seven two five million. That is the final payment on our Wendy Hill bonds that were issued in twenty sixteen. We paid a little less than that this year. I think it was about seven point six million in the current fiscal year. And then, um, this will be due, uh, February of twenty two for the final payment on those bonds. Just, um, big picture, um, this number includes the tw- uh, two thousand and one bonds, two thousand and five bonds, our two thousand and sixteen Smyrna Grove bonds, our two thousand and sixteen Wendy Hill bonds, and then the twenty nineteen TAD bonds. That's what makes up that fifty two million dollars. The, um, the biggest portion of our payments this year are towards the two thousand and five bonds. Um, there's about three million going towards that, and then we are paying off our two thousand and one bonds this fiscal year. General fund CIP, Landon talked about this, uh, previously. I will ahead and tell you that, um, you look at these things so much and you miss things. And, um, I totally missed that that says fiscal year, uh, twenty one. It should be, the yellow should be twenty two and then twenty three through twenty six are the rest of them. Landon, I'm trying to take credit for it.
Landon's claiming responsibility for that, but.
I'm trying to take some responsibility. Landon has done a fantastic job, so this is not a big deal at all. Um, this, uh, two point one million dollars in fiscal year twenty two is about seven hundred thousand dollars more than what we budgeted, um, in twenty twenty one. Um, we're going to fund this with a combination of a transfer in from the general fund and also using some general fund CIP reserves. During fiscal year twenty and twenty one, uh, we had projects that were planned and, uh, funds were moved from the general fund into our general fund CIP fund to, uh, pay for those. Because of COVID, uh, we pretty much stopped all of our, uh, CIP projects for fiscal year twenty, trying to be fiscally responsible. And then we were holding back on our twenty one projects as well to get a better feel of where we were going to be. Um, as part of this current year's budget process, we sat down with all the departments and went through those projects that had not been spent for twenty or twenty one and were able to, um, remove some of those projects and, um, and put that towards our current year CIP. And so there's, um, about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that was previously budgeted for other projects that we're going to reallocate to the fiscal year twenty two projects. So there is, um, eleven projects in fiscal, in fiscal year twenty two that we're recommending funding. The first is, um, for Parks and Rec is the Reed House landscaping. Um, everybody knows we've, we've, uh, put a lot of money into that property a couple of years ago. This is the finishing touch to do some landscaping so that we, um, will be able to hopefully increase the rental revenue with that site. Um, it's been a, uh, request for, you know, the landscaping. It also will allow us to have, uh, more outdoor functionality at that, uh, location. So that's a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, fifty thousand is for the maintenance areas at Tolson and Chuck Camp. Those facilities are, um, they're in not very good condition. Um, they are falling in. We have, uh, put fifty thousand dollars in the current year fiscal twenty one budget towards those. And then there'll be another fifty thousand to finish those up in fiscal year twenty two. Under public safety, we have a fifty thousand dollar cascade air filling system. That is a replacement for the system the fire department has. It's about ten years old, and so it's time for that to be replaced. The next one down, the police laptop computer refresh. We, we were able to remove the regular desktop upgrades, upgrades from our fiscal year twenty two budget. Um, and we were also able to remove the money for our twenty one police laptop, uh, because of the use of CARES funds that we received. So, um, this, this police, uh, project is a recurring project. We have every year to, uh, make sure the computers are up to date. But like I said, we were able to save that money in fiscal twenty one because of CARES money. The last one on here is SWAT tactical vest replacement for a little, for a little over fifty six thousand dollars. The vests are expired, and so we need to get new vests to keep, um, our staff safe. Um, public works, as Landon talked about previously, um, the money that we are going to put on for streetlights. We have got a new project, um, in green energy proj- uh, proj- projects, eight hundred thousand dollars. We have a couple of projects in mind. We have HVAC replacement. We have the control panel, um, to standardize that. We're also looking at generator replacement and some LED upgrades at the parks. Next one down is, um, Miss Lane's carpet replacement, twenty thousand dollars. This is a recurring project we've had of every year. It covers, it says carpet, but it actually, um, covers any kind of flooring replacements that we have throughout the city. Next one down, reef replacements and, um, reef repairs and replacements. This seven hundred and thirty five thousand dollars is entirely for the replacement of the roof over at the police department in the jail. Um, we've had leaks in there for a couple of years, um, and so we've had this on our CIP for a number of years. In future years, we're going to, uh, fund a Bronner Hall replacement. That's in twenty, uh, twenty fiscal year twenty twenty five, a hundred and fifteen thousand. And then the library will be in fiscal year twenty six for about ninety six thousand. Um, detention pond maintenance, uh, this is a project that was added, I believe, last year, um, to address the detention ponds within the city that are the city's replacement. They're not, um, HOAs, so the city's replace, um, responsibility. And so we're trying to, to, uh, put money aside to, uh, get those in the condition they need to be in. Replace underground sanita- sanitation cans. Um, this is another recurring project we have every year. Um, we have a portion of the city where we're not able to have our traditional, um, rollout cans. And so we have to have the underground cans. Um, they require maintenance and replacement. That's what this project is for. And then, um, the next project, sanitation carts, um, is just, uh, for new development and also for replacement of our existing carts. The total CIP, as I mentioned previously, is a little over two million dollars, two point one that's being recommended for funding. E nine one one CIP, we don't have anything, um, planned for twenty two or twenty three. The amount that's in there for twenty four is for, um, a re- to get us up to compliance with our system. Um, the water and sewer, there's water and sewer CIP. Um, infrastructure is a project that we have, um, every year. We are trying to put money towards our infrastructure. We are one of the few, um, that operate a water, um, utility that, um, doesn't have bond debt associated with it. So we're very proud of, proud of that. Last year, we, um, implemented a seven percent fee. I'm sorry, a seven percent increase in this line item every year, just to account for increases in prices, um, going on. We thought it was better to have a, um, a pretty standard increase every year, um, instead of, you know, just kind of taking a, a wild guess at it. Um, the next project down, meters and dials. This is a project we've been working on for several years. All of the city's meters and dials were put in at the same time, a little over fifteen years ago, um, and which means they're all expiring at the same time. We started this several years ago. We are in a, um, a, a five-year period where we're replacing all the meters and dials in the city. And then they're supposed to last for, um, fifteen years. And so we'll have a ten-year gap in that funding before we start the next, uh, process, um, for the next five years. Um, the next project down is drainage. This is just like infrastructure. Um, we budget for this annually just to cover any kind of drainage issu- issues within the city. The next project down, lead and copper inventory, a hundred thousand dollars. This is a new project, um, that was added this year. It's being mandated by the EPA. Um, we've got a hundred thousand in this year, four hundred thousand in fiscal year twenty three. There are three parts to that. Um, we have to, um, do testing, have an inventory of it, and then, and inform the public. And then we have to actually, um, replace anything that we find. So that, that five hundred thousand over two years should cover that. And, um, this CIP, water sewer CIP is funded by a transfer in from the water sewer fund, which Landon, uh, referenced earlier. Stormwater CIP, um, we budget expenses in this fund, um, equal to the amount of revenue that we plan to collect. Similar to the water CIP, last year, we implemented a standard increase of seven cent that's effective in January of every year, just like our increase in our, uh, in our water rates. The current fee is three fifty two. This budget moves that to three fifty nine, starting in January. The last increases we did were fifty cents, um, each in January two thousand and eighteen, in January, uh, twenty twenty. And then this year we had a seven cent. Um, again, we feel like it's a better idea to slowly, um, increase that instead of having these larger increases every, every so often. And then we think that these increases are going to be enough, more than enough to meet the capital needs of the stormwater over the next couple of years. Twenty sixteen SPOST, as, uh, Landon mentioned earlier, this is our, um, biggest part of our, of our capital projects. You can see, um, that we are, um, planning to spend a little over eleven million dollars for fiscal year twenty two and then a little over nine in twenty three. That is our biggest remaining project, um, of our twenty sixteen SPOST. And it is, um, obviously the priority project to get that taken care of, um, as we move forward. We're going to, um, we're gonna, we're, our twenty two SPOST that pass will be starting in January of, uh, twenty two. And so that's also accounted for in this budget. Just a note in the, as mentioned earlier in the debt, uh, this, these numbers include a little over, uh, seven point eight million dollars for principal and interest on the Wendy Hill bonds, um, that are going to be paid off. Vehicle replacements and additions, um, we have a vehicle replacement fund, as Landon also mentioned, um, that we are funding all of our vehicle, all, all of our rolling equipment, um, gets funded through this. Um, you can see, uh, this year, we are recommending seventeen, um, uh, re- replacements and additions, um, a little over one point two million dollars. Included in that seventeen is thirteen that were scheduled. There is a new fleet addition for economic development that, that division currently does not have a vehicle. And, um, we are trying to focus on that as a city. And so we need, um, we need to have a vehicle that will allow for, um, that department to, to do what they need to do. We also are, um, recommending a new fleet addition for highways and streets. We, um, recommend an F four fifty to help with the SPOST projects and other landscaping, um, going forward. Uh, the city has, uh, taken on more responsibility as far as actually doing the work ourselves for some of our SPOST projects. And so, um, we need the equipment, um, to get our workers, uh, to the locations to do that. This includes an early replacement of an ex- of explorer in the fire department. Um, we are actually going to change that to an F one fifty, similar to what we did this current year. We're trying to, um, get those vehicles so that they're not all in one, they're not, it's not one vehicle with, with all of those, um, the smoke and everything in the vehicle. We're trying to have it where it's in the cab of the truck, so it's, you know, less risk for staff. Um, there's also another replacement for a sanitation garbage truck. There were two that were replaced in fiscal, uh, twenty one. And this one is just, it's in bad shape, so it needs to be replaced. Um, as Landon mentioned earlier, um, we do have higher vehicle replacements in twenty four and twenty five because of the fire trucks. Um, there are, um, ladders and engines in, uh, those years. And then in fiscal year twenty six, um, we also, we have the fire trucks and we also have, uh, sanitation trucks that are going to be replaced. I didn't have that schedule on here, but, um, we just want to focus on the current year. One note, we do show a five-year plan for vehicles and for CIP, but, um, you only adopt for one year. Um, but we'd like to present a five-year plan just to kind of have a big picture of where we're looking for the next five years. Personnel, um, you can see on here that we have seven positions that we're recommending. Um, we had tw- twenty-three full-time positions and two part-time positions that were, um, requested by our departments. Um, we whittled that down to, um, six full-time positions and one part-time position. Um, the assistant city engineer that we're budgeting is going to be stormwater specific and will be funded, um, by a transfer in from the stormwater fund to cover the salary and benefits of that position.
Back up one slide, if you don't mind. Oh, you, you figured it out? Oh, never mind. Sorry, we figured it out. Yep, never mind. Sorry to interrupt your flow.
Okay, no, you're good. So, um, the engineer position that I mentioned that was going to be funded by stormwater is budgeted fifty percent of the year, which means it will start, uh, January first. The, um, top position on there, the part-time, uh, city clerk, that position is a part-time position. It is being recommended to start, um, in, uh, October. Um, and that is, we've had an increase in our, uh, court, um, due to, um, better traffic enforcement, I guess, is the. And, um, and so we need, they need some help in processing, uh, um, all of the, the people through court. Um, the next one down, the EMA, um, emergency management specialist one. This is a position that the fire department has been asking for, for several years. I think with what we've gone through, uh, with COVID this year, we've seen, um, a need for that position and also to, uh, get some plans in place. So that one is budgeted also at three quarters of a year. Already talked about the engineer, um, HR systems coordinator. This one is budgeted for the full fiscal year to start Ju- uh, July one. This is going to, um, consolidate our payroll process. Currently, we have part of it in finance and part of it in HR. This position is going to be responsible for, um, the entire thing, so that it's not split between two different departments. It is also going to add, um, a little bit, a, a level of, uh, more review, uh, to those processes to ensure that things are done correctly, because obviously payroll is very important, uh, to the city. Next one down is crew worker. There are two, uh, positions that are being recommended for highways and streets. Um, that is related to the SPOST projects as well and, um, some landscaping as well. The city's, like I said, is doing more of that, that work ourselves instead of contracting that out. And so we need additional help to be able to do that. The last one is a, another utility services clerk and water admin. Um, I think that we can all agree that there is a lot of, uh, a lot of phone calls that come into our water utility department. Um, and they are just inundated with calls. And so, um, this position is, um, going to be funded to start, uh, January first to help them, um, help with the phone calls and help in to, to improve our customer service. Uh, that department is one of the departments that pretty much every citizen, um, you know, comes into contact with. And so we need to improve their experience if we can. So, um, that position has been requested for a couple of years, and we felt this year, uh, was a good year to, uh, to bring that on. Um, the requested impact here is three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. As I mentioned, some of these positions are budgeted for partial year. So it is a four hundred and five thousand dollar annual impact, um, for all those positions. Reclassifications, um, we have two from the fire department. Um, they're both taking, uh, lieutenants, one in fire prevention and one in fire training, and they want to reclassify them to a captain. They, they're already doing the duties of a captain. And so, uh, they just want to, they requested to have them upgraded, um, so that they are consistent with, um, what, what they're doing. Um, the water admin reclass, um, our utilities services foreman has taken on a lot more, uh, responsibilities. And so, um, therefore, we need to, to change that position, upgrade it a little bit to, to account for those responsibilities. The last one is simply a name change from HR technician to HR and risk management assistant, um, just to kind of better encompass what the, the, the future of that position is going to be. You can see the budget impact for these four is about a little over eleven million doll- I'm sorry, eleven thousand dollars. Yeah, I know. It's late. I'm tired. Sorry. Um, it's about a little over eleven thousand dollars for the fiscal year. So as Landon mentioned earlier, the budget book is online. If you go to our, uh, website and you go to the finance and budget tab at the top, um, if you click on that, um, you will, there's a link in there to the budget. You can also get there. Did I just go? Can y'all hear me? It's not going one way. Okay, I'm sorry. So you can, you can go on and, and find our budget there. Um, it's also in print at the city clerk's, um, office and also at the library. Um, if you have any questions, you can go and look at it there. The schedule, obviously tonight is our required public hearing. Um, we are going to, um, discuss the budget again at the next work session in June third. And then on June seventh, um, we. and then on June seventh, um, we hope for the budget to be adopted at the council meeting that night. So, that's all we have. If y'all have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer them for you.
Great job, y'all. Any questions of staff? Mr. Budget Chairman, nothing?
I was going to say, Landon did a great job.
Landon did a fantastic job. He, this, this is his first year doing this, and he has done a fantastic job.
He's our management fellow, and then now he's on, uh, he's on staff full-time, so, uh, done a great job for us. If y'all don't see the council asking a lot of questions, this is not the first time we've heard this. We've been over this and over this, so, um, very good. This is a, this is a public hearing. Um, anybody want to come up and speak, uh, about the budget? I'd invite you to come up now. All right, and we'll close the public hearing and move on to the next item. Thanks again, y'all. Appreciate it. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is the consent agenda. Mr. Bennett, can you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Yes, sir. Item A, MIN twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-five, approval of the April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item B, MIN twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-one, approval of the May third, twenty-twenty-one pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, MIN twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-two, approval of the May third, twenty-twenty-one mayor and council meeting minutes. Item D, twenty-twenty-one dash one-eighty-five, of Ward, Ward Park Grandstand seating to GT Grandstands Incorporated using the TIPS Cooperative Contract number one-eight-one-one-zero-one in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars to be funded from the general fund and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item E, twenty-twenty-one dash one-eighty-seven, request to install a no parking zone on the east side of Afton Way from approximately fifty-two oh-six Afton Way to approximately fifty-one ninety-one Afton Way. Item F, twenty-twenty-one dash one-ninety-six, approval to award Max Air Mechanical eight-fourteen Livingston Court, Marietta, Georgia, three-zero-zero-six-seven, to replace two evaporative air-cooled chillers at the Smyrna Community Center using two-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-eleven dollars of Smyrna Public Works funds from Cobb Douglas Block Grant Public Facilities Balance and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. And item G, twenty-twenty-one dash two-zero-five, approval of the King Springs Elementary Mobile Fifth Grader Parade on Wednesday, May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one at ten AM with rolling road closures with police presence following from North Cooper Lake Park to King Springs Elementary.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Gould has moved. Uh, Dr. Wheaton has seconded. All those in favor, please vote. Let's approve six-zero. Item nine is ward or committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Glenn Pickens.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, no report this evening.
Mr. Wagner.
Um, I just want to, I think it's been said a couple of times, but staff has had a busy night tonight. Um, I want to thank our staff for always doing, uh, what I think is a great job. Um, you guys try to give us impartial advice and, um, spend a lot of time behind the scenes and hopefully, uh, tell us what to do a lot of the time, so we really appreciate it, and I just wanted to say thanks after a long night.
Mr. Welch.
Real quickly, uh, one of our citizens made a comment tonight that we were picking and choosing, and, and I want to remind everybody on this council that that's what we were elected to do. We pick and choose what we think is best for all of the city of Smyrna without regard for, for our own personal or political gain, um, but that's, that's what we do. That's what we're supposed to do here on this council, is to pick and choose what we think is best for this city. With that, I close.
Ms. Wilkinson.
Uh, I, I have a question that a citizen had asked me yesterday, and I, uh, meant to ask it earlier, but they're interested in, they've been, uh, before the pandemic, they were watching the, um, the meetings on television, and they told me, when I talked to them yesterday, it was actually Pete Wood's sister, and she said they would love watching the, um, council meetings on television, and are they back on television, uh, since we're back in the council chambers, or?
Yes, ma'am, the meeting is being broadcast right now on Charter, and before this meeting, it was broadcast the previous meeting, but we had an issue when we reconnected everything from bringing it over, and so it's only been the last two meetings that have been broadcast, but yes, we are running live tonight.
Okay, uh, and what channel would the, would I be able to let them know that it's on? Is it this?
I will verify that and get back with you on the exact channel.
Okay, thank you. All right, and that's all. With that, I yield.
Mr. Gould.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Wheaton.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a, a, um, mention of condolences to, uh, friends and family of, uh, of somebody who, uh, was unfortunately killed in a pedestrian accident, not in the city of Smyrna, but definitely around the city and, um, really adjacent to a lot of residents in the city, certainly touched a lot of people in my ward, um, uh, as well. Uh, certainly a tragic pedestrian accident for sure. Uh, just a reminder, you know, with more people being out and a lot more traffic, for everyone to be safe while they're moving around the community, um, watch out for each other, uh, watch out for friends, family, neighbors, and all of that, uh, and certainly thank you for the county police and, and the coordination and the conversations that the city and the county staff have been having about, um, uh, that incident for sure. Uh, and with that, I yield.
Thank you, Dr. Wheaton. Yep?
My, uh, apologies for my tardiness tonight, but I had a, a little one graduating kindergarten tonight that I thought, uh, should be there, but, um...
You got your priorities right. Mr. Cochran. Noted that Mr. Cochran was away for a week in California, and this is his punishment for three-hour-and-fifteen-minute meeting. Ms. Heather? Ms. Tina? Okay. Item ten is show cause hearings. We have none. Item eleven is citizen input. Angela McReynolds, fifty-two oh-four Afton Way. You waited for, you waited a long time to speak.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Angela McReynolds, who resides at fifty-two oh-four Afton Way. Mr. Mayor, as well as my city council members, I truly wish to thank each of you for your votes concerning the parking ordeal in my neighborhood. I'm grateful to Mr. Bennett and his assistant Penny for their swift visit to my subdivision and witnessing firsthand the problem faced. This process, though years in the making, was quick and user-friendly. Afton Downs will now become an even safer place to live with this issue resolved. Having lived only in Smyrna since I moved to Georgia twenty-one years ago, I can truly say that I am proud to be a Smyrna resident. Again, thank you to you all, and good night.
Thank you so much for waiting, and, and you just set a new record. Nobody's waited ever that long to thank us for anything. Uh, that's just, uh, uh, Joe and Penny and our staff go above and beyond, and I think folks are seeing that. They, they come out hands-on approach and, and take a look for themselves of what the problem is and figure out a solution, so we're glad we could fix that and glad you were here, and thank you for your kind words. Anybody else out there who'd like to say anything this evening? All right, with that, if there's no other business brought before this body, adjourn this meeting at ten-seventeen.